Could the clerk call the roll please?
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Councilmember DuBois. Mayor Philseth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fine. Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Tanaka. Four present.
So, the welcome, welcome to the 18th council meeting. The first item on the agenda is a conference with city attorneys relative to the Alvarez versus City of Palo Alto case. Could I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Niss, seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Would you vote on the board please? And that passes five zero with Councilmembers DuBois and Vice Mayor Fine absent. Are there any public speakers for this item?
Yeah.
Then let's go do that and we will return in an hour.
Okay. Uh, the council has returned from closed session with no reportable action. So we're gonna move on to the, uh, the regu- the, the regular agenda. First, uh, first I want to make a comment on, uh, we had a tragedy over the weekend, I think, as, as probably everybody knows. Um, it's with great sadness that we mourn the loss of one of our own city team members this evening. Mayor, the mayor of the city of Palo Alto on behalf of the city council. I would like to announce that we will close tonight's city council meeting in honor of utilities department employee Donatas O'Hamana, uh, who lost his life this weekend during a work site incident. Uh, Donatas was a veteran of the United States Air Force and a seasoned electrical lineman who joined the city of Palo Alto this month as a utility line worker. He was only forty-two years old. He survived by his wife and his four daughters. And at this time, I'd like to ask that everyone join us in a moment of silence in memory of the remembrance of his life and service to the Palo Alto community and the country at large. Thank you. We now move on to the, uh, the main meeting. Uh, first, uh, agenda changes, deletions and additions, and I believe there's one change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on item number thirteen, uh, this is a budget amendment related to a contract, um, with Perkins Well. We'd like to defer that to your next meeting, which I believe is on December second.
Do we need a motion on that, or we can just do that, right? I'm sorry? Uh, all moved, uh, moved by, moved by council member Niss, I will second it. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passed unanimously with Vice Mayor Fine absent. Uh, have we now moved to oral communications? Uh, are there any speakers?
You know, actually, I need one minute, so if I might suggest-
Actually, why don't we do that? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Not all public speakers should be assigned here.
It is, yes. Let's, let's do city manager comments then. Well, we'll, we'll hold oral communications open if we, if we get to it too early.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sorry, I just need a second to get oriented here. Uh, first, uh, just to follow on the mayor's comments, um, thank you, council, for that recognition of our employee. The mayor announced, uh, City Palo Alto families mourning one of the loss of one of our own utilities department employee, Donatas O'Hamana, a veteran of the United States Air Force and a seasoned electrical lineman. He was involved in a work site incident, uh, while working on Saturday morning as part of a five-member city utilities crew working to upgrade an electrical transformer. O'Hamana was transferred to the hospital where he later passed away from his injuries. I do want to take a moment to, uh, thank, uh, all of the individuals that were involved in responding and addressing this incident, uh, for their professionalism and support. Challenging moments like this, uh, really is a testament to the caring and commitment of our people and, uh, that we really do pull together as a city family. This includes our police and fire departments, as well as our utilities, public works, and human resources department staff, uh, as well as my office, all of whom worked quickly to respond and support everyone involved. Flags outside city hall and other municipal buildings in Palo Alto are being flown at half-staff in honor of, uh, Donatas O'Hamana. The forty-two-year-old had just joined, uh, the city of Palo Alto this month and is survived by his wife and four daughters. Uh, we do note that a GoFundMe account has been established to support their family, uh, through this difficult time, uh, and that more information, including, uh, the GoFundMe account details, can be found on a press release, uh, that is posted on our homepage at citypalooalto.org. Would like to thank, uh, specifically the community members for their outpouring of support in this very difficult issue. So that said, uh, turning forward to a few, uh, upcoming, uh, issues of interest, uh, and upcoming meetings. Uh, first, uh, we are planning a meeting related, uh, to planned, uh, tree work, uh, related to the Arastodaro Road bike path. Uh, that meeting will be this Wednesday, November twentieth, at three-thirty PM. Thanks to, uh, several community members, uh, who raised concerns about the tree removals and trimming, trimming, excuse me, trimming planned for the pathway in the San Francisc- San Francisco, so used to saying San Francisco around here, the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission's right-of-way between Arastodaro Road and the Los Altos city limits. The city has paused the planned tree work to share information, uh, and to answer questions at this meeting hosted by the public works department. Uh, meeting will be located at the entrance, uh, to the Arastodaro Road pathway. Uh, for more information, you see our website, citypalooalto.org slash C A Corridor, all one word, C A Corridor. A couple of other meetings just of note, uh, this week, we've got Project Safety Net having also a meeting at the same time on Wednesday, three-thirty, uh, where Project Safety Net will hold its monthly community meeting at Coverly Community Center, room H-one. This month's meeting will focus on Coalition in Action Emerging Partnerships, showcasing the Palo Alto Museum's Teen Advisory Council and Alum Rock Counseling Center. Uh, we've got more information on that at psnpalooalto.com, all one word, psnpalooalto.com. And finally, uh, the holidays are upon us. Uh, we have our annual tree lighting at Litton Plaza this Friday, November twenty-second, from five-thirty PM to seven PM, where the Merry Old Christmas carolers will kick off the festive, this festive free event, followed by the Children's Theater Choir, the Keys School Choir, and the Beyond California Band from Nuovo School. Artist Jeremy Sutton will be in attendance, creating an original live portrait of the Palo Alto's twenty-nineteen tree lighting. This is a wonderful community event to kick off the holiday season. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, we now move to oral communications, which we will, uh, keep open until, uh, at least seven o'clock, even if we move on to, uh, other things, uh, given the hour. And the first speaker, uh, will be Tui, Tui Nguyen, uh, president of Foothill College, and she's not back yet. Kathy Jordan, Kathy, are you here? There we go, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Um, I appreciate the, uh, honoring of the city employee and comments about him. Um, that speaks to, uh, one of the things I wanted to talk about, which is this article that appeared in the Post today about, um, the city reporting a seventy-six million-dollar surplus. I can think of nothing better for our city council and our city to do than to honor our employees by making sure that we fully fund our unfunded pension liabilities that remain, and also to further honor our taxpayers here in the city, um, by doing so. Um, the article reports that last year, there was a fifty-nine-point-five-million-dollar surplus for the city. This year, it's reporting a seventy-six-million-dollar surplus. Yet, it talks about that the city's pension liabilities grew, that the gap grew by nine-point-eight percent compared to the previous year, up to four-hundred-and-fifty-five-million dollars. So we certainly want to make sure that our employees have their pensions fully funded and that their families can rely on them, of course. And, um, I just wanted to remark on one other item here. It talks about that property taxes were ten percent more than the previous year, about a million dollars more than what the city was expecting. And it also states that there's forty-six-million dollars that is unrestricted and may be used to meet the government's ongoing obligations to its citizens and creditors. So I'd like to respectfully ask the city to consider devoting every penny of that forty-six-million dollars to bring down the four-hundred-and-fifty-four, four-hundred-and-fifty-five million dollars in outstanding pension liabilities to both current employees and retired employees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, if he's here, will be Simon Glazer. Simon, are you here?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Uh, this, uh, hi, my name is Simon Glazer, and, uh, this is my friend Marina. We represent the community of San Alma Homeowners Association. It is, uh, San Antonio Road and Alma Street. Uh, we have a petition, petition, this honorable city council to install and enforce no parking at night signs, because we have a major problem for the past several years with abundance of, uh, RVs and people living in, uh, in the RVs. Uh, we have a petition where I, we express, uh, all the concerns and, uh, and what we would like, uh, you to consider. Uh, we actually expecting more people about a few minutes from now who is in support of this petition. Uh, that's it. Marina, would you like to say anything?
Besides, you have to take a look at this first, because it's a-
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Can you use the mic, please?
Uh, so, it's a, it looks like a hazard. It's a T-bone intersection, our community end, and RVs are blocking, uh, there is no bike-
And his four daughters. And at this time, I'd like to ask that everyone join us in a moment of silence in memory of the remembrance of his life and service to the Palo Alto community and the country at large. Thank you. We now move on to the main meeting. First agenda changes deletions and additions, and I believe there's one change.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on item number 13, this is a budget amendment related to a contract with Perkins Well, we'd like to defer that to your next meeting, which I believe is on December 2nd.
Do we need a motion on that, or we can just do that, right? I'm sorry? Moved by Councilmember Niss, I will second it. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Vice Mayor Fine absent. We now move to oral communications. Are there any speakers?
You know, actually, I need one minute, so if I might suggest...
Why don't we do that? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
It is, yes. Let's do City Manager comments then. We'll hold oral communications open if we get to it too early.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Sorry, I just need a second to get oriented here. First, just to follow on the mayor's comments, thank you, council, for that recognition of our employee. The mayor announced City Palo Alto Families Morning, one of the loss of one of our own utilities department employee, Donatus O'Homehanna, a veteran of the United States Air Force and seasoned electrical lineman. He was involved in a work site incident while working on Saturday morning as part of a five-member city utilities crew working to upgrade an electrical transformer. O'Homehanna was transferred to the hospital where he later passed away from his injuries. I do want to take a moment to thank all of the individuals that were involved in responding and addressing this incident for their professionalism and support. Challenging moments like this really is a testament to the caring and commitment of our people and that we really do pull together as a city family. This includes our police and fire departments, as well as our utilities, public works, and human resources department staff, as well as my office, all of whom worked quickly to respond and support everyone involved. Flags outside City Hall and other municipal buildings in Palo Alto are being flown at half-staff in honor of Donatus O'Homehanna. The 42-year-old had just joined the City Palo Alto this month and is survived by his wife and four daughters. We do note that a GoFundMe account has been established to support their family through this difficult time, and that more information, including the GoFundMe account details, can be found on a press release that is posted on our homepage at cityofpaloalto.org. Would like to thank specifically the community members for their outpouring of support in this very difficult issue. So that said, turning forward to a few upcoming issues of interest and upcoming meetings. First, we are planning a meeting related to planned tree work related to the Arastodaro Road bike path. That meeting will be this Wednesday, November 20th, at 3:30 p.m. Thanks to several community members who raised concerns about the tree removals and trimming planned for the pathway in the San Francisco, so used to saying San Franciscio around here, the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission's right-of-way between Arastodaro Road and the Los Altos city limits. The city has paused the planned tree work to share information and to answer questions at this meeting hosted by the Public Works Department. Meeting will be located at the entrance to the Arastodaro Road pathway. For more information, you see our website, cityofpaloalto.org/CACorridor, all one word, CACorridor. Couple other meetings just of note. This week, we've got Project Safety Net having also a meeting at the same time on Wednesday, 3:30, where Project Safety Net will hold its monthly community meeting at Coverley Community Center, Room H1. This month's meeting will focus on Coalition in Action Emerging Partnerships showcasing the Palo Alto Museum's Teen Advisory Council and Alum Rock Counseling Center. We've got more information on that at psnpaloalto.com, all one word, psnpaloalto.com. And finally, the holidays are upon us. We have our annual tree lighting at Litton Plaza this Friday, November 22nd, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., where the Merry Old Christmas carolers will kick off this festive free event, followed by the Children's Theater Choir, the Keys School Choir, and the Beyond California Band from Nuovo School. Artist Jeremy Sutton will be in attendance, creating an original live portrait of the Palo Alto's 2019 Tree Lighting. This is a wonderful community event to kick off the holiday season. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. We now move to oral communications, which we will keep open until at least 7 o'clock, even if we move on to other things, given the hour. And the first speaker will be Tui Nguyen, President of Foothill College. And she's not back yet. Kathy Jordan, Kathy, are you here? There we should be. And you'll have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. Appreciate the honoring of the city employee and comments about him. That speaks to one of the things I wanted to talk about, which is this article that appeared in the Post today about the city reporting a $76 million surplus. I can think of nothing better for our city council and our city to do than to honor our employees by making sure that we fully fund our unfunded pension liabilities that remain, and also to further honor our taxpayers here in the city by doing so. The article reports that last year, there was a $59.5 million surplus for the city. This year, it's reporting a $76 million surplus. Yet, it talks about that the city's pension liabilities grew, that the gap grew by 9.8% compared to the previous year, up to $455 million. So we certainly want to make sure that our employees have their pensions fully funded and that their families can rely on them, of course. And I just wanted to remark on one other item here. It talks about that property taxes were 10% more than the previous year, about $1 million more than what the city was expecting. And it also states that there's $46 million that is unrestricted and may be used to meet the government's ongoing obligations to its citizens and creditors. So I'd like to respectfully ask the city consider devoting every penny of that $46 million to bring down the $455 million in outstanding pension liabilities to both current employees and retired employees. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, if he's here, will be Simon Glazer. Simon, are you here?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Hi, my name is Simon Glazer, and this is my friend Marina. We represent the community of San Alma Homeowners Association. It is San Antonio Road and Alma Street. We have a petition, petition this honorable city council to install and enforce no parking at night signs because we have a major problem for the past several years with abundance of RVs and people living in the RVs. We have a petition where I, we express all the concerns and what we would like you to consider. We actually expecting more people about a few minutes from now who is in support of this petition. That's it. Marina, would you like to say anything?
Besides, you have to take a look at this first. What's a...
I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Can you use the mic, please?
So it's, it looks like a hazard. It's a T-bone intersection, our community end, and RVs are blocking. There is no bike lane, so it's in there. So RVs are blocking, and people who are going in and out of the community can't see anything. Also, it's right across the street from Caltrain Station, so, and it's a major commute to Google and, well, and other organizations. So people are bicycling, they take sidewalk, because it's impossible to pass.
So generally, we have a major problem with these RVs, and we keep fighting these RVs. Some of them people living there, some of them just sit there. A lot of people are bringing equipment overnight. There is a huge traffic of construction trucks. There is a human waste. They leave garbage aside. We have small children, and we had some major problem with trespassing the property. So we are requesting to install, as it's already been done in the city, no overnight parking signs. Thank you. And we have a petition, we already put this petition on record with the city.
Thank you. I was gonna say, you can give it to the clerk.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I was just gonna suggest, Mr. Mayor, if we can make sure to get your contact information, then we'll have staff follow up.
Simon, did you catch that?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Simon, did you catch the City Manager's comments?
Contact, got it.
Contact, okay, great. Super. Thank you. Is President Nguyen back yet?
She's, she's, will be walking in in 30 seconds.
Why don't we move to approval of minutes? And I will move that we improve the action minutes from October 28th.
Second.
Seeing no lights for comments, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Vice Mayor. Why don't we then move to the consent calendar? And we'll do the consent calendar, and then we'll come back to oral communications. So Councilmember DuBois has moved consent calendar, seconded by Councilmember Niss. I see a light on from Councilmember Koo. Councilmember Koo, would you care to register a no vote?
Yes, thank you. I'm registering a no vote on number 11.
Seeing no other lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Vice Mayor Fine absent. Councilmember Koo, would you care to speak to your no vote on number 11?
The development of that property 1050 page mill is almost complete, and I think when the then council voted to approve this project, there's, the general community has an expectation of mitigation of the traffic. And at this point, to delay it any further should be another public hearing. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor Phil Seth?
Yes.
I'd also like to announce that the interviews for the board and commission will be held on Wednesday, December 4th, beginning at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. And yes, and so one of the items on consent was the scheduling of the board and commission interviews. We now return to the, to oral communications. Is President Nguyen with us again? Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tweety Nguyen, I'm president of Foothill College. I'd love for the opportunity to be on the agenda so we can have the back and forth in light of the Brown Act, but I wanted to seize this opportunity with the public comment portion to just give you the latest of what's happening at Foothill and ask you to join in the conversation. So first and foremost, I'd like to very much thank Councilmember Allison Cormack and Councilmember Lydia Koo, who actually attended our commencement this past year and the year before. I really appreciate your presence, representing that's had a stronger town-gown relationship. And it's also for that reason that I'm here today. Foothill College is doing great. Our rankings are extraordinary, number one community college for online education in the state of California, number one graduation rates in California, number two in the country for graduation rates for community colleges. That's over 1,000 community colleges. Our students are extraordinary in terms of their transfers to the UCs and the CSUs. And in fact, this year, Stanford nationally selected 20 students to enroll as transfers from community colleges, three from Foothill. And last year, 21 they selected nationally, three also from Foothill. And last week, a student who transferred from Foothill College to Yale University is doing very well, in fact, wrote an article in the Yale Daily News about the stigma of community colleges and really trying to dispel that myth. So our colleges are doing really well, our students are doing absolutely well, and they're exemplifying the service leadership that we need. And so for that reason, we're honoring their work. In fact, they've raised tremendous awareness this past year around student homelessness. 19% of our students who responded to a survey have been homeless in the last year. That means that they live, they're living in their car, or they're going couch surfing from one couch to another, or maybe even, you know, living on the streets while being full-time students. And so we want to honor them with the Service Leadership Lunch Container to represent homelessness and food insecurity. So I'd like to give you, it's a little tricket, and we'll give it to the board clerk to pass it out to you. But the reason why I'm greatly here is because of a survey that, a polling that we did in the community about what the community needs are. And the community is telling us to address the issue of student homelessness and hunger. So we want input from you. So we'll pass this sheet out. It's for the members of the public. It'll also be at the agenda area, too. So that's the reason why I'm here, for you to join in the conversation and have a great council meeting.
Thank you very much, and thank you for joining us. Do we have some more cards? Next speaker will be Lori Langalar.
Hi, my name is Lori Langdon. I'm a resident at the San Alma Homeowners Association. And all of this community here is about 34 people. We live at the corner of San Antonio and Alma, and along that stretch of street, we've had numerous RVs parking for many years now. There were five this afternoon. There's also a tent back in the corner. It's becoming quite an encampment. They urinate in the street, against the wall, they deposit trash and fecal matter. We're concerned about safety on the streets. The road is quite narrow with cars parking, commuter cars to go to the train station there, and people live in their cars as well. There's a lot of bicycle traffic. We're right next to the Google Research Development. They have the Waymo vans going in and out. So the streets are quite narrow. Bicycles then go up on the sidewalk, endangering pedestrians. There's a lot of commuter traffic. So we're hoping that the council might consider installing no parking signs or bicycle lanes or something to narrow the streets. They park so close, you can't really get a good sightline when you're trying to turn out of Ponce onto San Antonio. I don't know what the solution is. We're hoping that maybe overnight, no overnight parking signs or bicycle lanes or something could be done to help alleviate the situation. It's been going on for quite some time. There's one RV that's been there three years. Questions?
If you're willing, Councilmember Niss would like to ask you a question.
Yes. Could you just tell us your location again? You said Alma in San Antonio. I'm trying to visualize.
Picture, yes. We're right across from the San Antonio Train Station on Alma and San Antonio, and then Ponce Drive is a small street. We're part of a development right there on the corner. Our pool area backs up right to the corner where the traffic light is, at San Antonio and Alma.
And it is in Palo Alto?
It is in Palo Alto. And there's a cloverleaf there with the San Antonio overpass, and then you can go under it. I don't know if anyone remembers the old Mayfield Mall.
I know right where you mean, and somehow I had thought that was Mountain View, so my error. Thanks.
I think we're right on the border.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chaim Korzinski.
Hi, thank you for considering this petition. My name is Chaim Korzinski. I'm also resident of San Alma, together with my wife Karen and our three small children, Noam, Yanniv, and Liel, who are eight, eight, seven, and five. And so I'm, first and foremost, coming to you as a parent, a concerned parent. We live actually right at the corner of Ponce and San Antonio, the Frontage Road. And so with three young kids, it creates a hazard for our three children whenever they want to go out and play. And we don't know any of the people who live in these RVs. And I have sympathy for their situation as a neighbor and also as a community rabbi. I'm the rabbi of congregation Itz Chaim, which is the congregation right on Alma. So as a rabbi of a community synagogue, this is our neighborhood as well. And we are currently entertaining the possibility of using our parking lot for RV parking, or for, I shouldn't say RV, for vehicle parking overnight in a program called Lots of Love. You may be familiar with it. And so I feel that it's our moral obligation, our religious obligation, to consider that, to do what we can to help these people. But at the same time, I feel the civic responsibility and the family responsibility to be here tonight to take care of our neighborhood as well. Thank you.
If you're willing, if you're willing to take a question from Councilmember Tanaka?
Sure. So thank you for coming out, and thank you for the other community members coming out to speak about this. So at the last Policy and Services meeting, we actually talked about this program. And right now, the program doesn't have any enforcement, even though we have a three-day law about not parking there. You certainly aren't supposed to park three years, and, you know, the three days, three days is the limit, but it's not really enforced. What's your feeling, given that you're considering this, about coupling the enforcement of the three-day law with the safe parking, Lots for Love, whatever it's called?
Right.
Kind of like the way Mountain View does in all the other cities? What's your feeling on that versus what's current direction, where it's only having the program but no enforcement of the three-day law?
So my understanding of the Lots of Love program is that it's a highly monitored program, which was piloted in Mountain View, together with a social service agency there, that is very strict about allowing, filtering exactly which clients are going to be able to park in those parking lots. And they're actually in charge of the enforcement to make sure that they're keeping to the hours that they promised.
Sorry, I meant enforcement of the issue that you're talking about.
So I'm gonna break in a little bit here. We've got to be careful, because this is not an agendized policy issue. So if it's a real quick question, we can do that, but otherwise...
Yeah, I was referring to enforcement of what you guys are coming out to talk about, which is enforcement of the three-day law, so people can't park on the street for three years.
I'm not, I'm not an expert on the law, but I, but my understanding is that, is that that's the law in the books, that this should, this needs to be enforced. And it's not being enforced.
Thank you. Seeing no further speakers, we will move on to the action calendar. And the first item is an addendum to the 2015 EIR for the recycled water program. And I see, staff has brought, staff has brought the heavy artillery out for this, and so thank you very much for being here this evening, and you have the floor.
Well, good evening, Mayor Phil Seth and council members. I'm Brad Eggleston, Director of Public Works, and I'm here with Phil Bobel from Public Works and Carla Daly from Utilities. And tonight, we're here to recommend council's approval of the agreement between Valley Water, Mountain View, and Palo Alto for the advanced water purification facility and effluent transfer. Council last discussed this item in a study session at its September 23rd meeting, and since then, the agreement terms have been finalized. So Phil and Carla will give the presentation, and then we'll also hear from Valley Water District Director Gary Cremmon, who's out there in the audience, at the end of the staff presentation. And with that, I will turn it over to Phil when he gets his phone silenced. Carla's gonna start it off.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much. We do have a very brief presentation. We have been before you a number of times on this issue, and so we will keep it short. Do quickly want to recognize a couple of people. This has been, all of our work around water reuse the last few years has been a collaborative, collaborative effort between Utilities and Public Works. I'd like to recognize Karen North, the Watershed Protection Manager out in the audience, who's been a key member of this team. Also, Elizabeth Flagel with the City of Mountain View is here with us this evening, as well as Garth Hall from Valley Water Staff. So if you wouldn't mind waving quickly. This is just a quick overview to remind everyone of the public meeting and public engagements that we've had over the last year or so. Since we met for the study session on September 23rd, I'd like to call your attention to another important event. We held a community engagement meeting over at Lucy Stern Community Center, where we did our best to really help educate any community members who are interested in this partnership deal and make sure that all of those community members had their questions answered. I think it was an informative and interesting event for everyone who attended. And then, of course, tonight, we're here to ask for your approval. As you know, council has a Sustainability Climate Action Plan. Water is one of the chapters in that plan, and we have been working on water reuse in order to address a number of specific goals and implementation items that are part of that plan. As a quick reminder, the Regional Water Quality Control Plant actually treats the wastewater from six communities, Palo Alto plus five others. About 5% of that wastewater is currently being used to produce non-potable recycled water, primarily used for landscaping, a little bit for toilet flushing, and a little bit for industrial processes in Palo Alto and Mountain View. We do have a number of infographics that are included in your staff report, and we've put a few of them in this presentation tonight to help with any discussion or questions that you may have later. This one shows the drinking water supply source for all of the six entities whose wastewater goes to the Regional Water Quality Control Plant. And so you can see we're a mix of SFPUC customers and Valley Water customers for our drinking water. That drinking water turns into wastewater, which ends up at our Regional Water Quality Control Plant. And then, under the proposed partnership, about 20% of the water would go to a small salt removal facility to improve the quality of our non-drinking, non-potable recycled water. About 30% of it would be designated for environmental needs, such as the Bay and the Emily Renzel Marsh. And about 50% of that treated wastewater would be transferred to Valley Water. With that, I'm going to turn over to Phil Bobel.
Phil Bobel, Public Works. So the next slide gives you a little more detail about the agreement. So you see the Regional Water Quality Control Plant there at the top, and the agreement branches in two directions headed downward. And as Carla mentioned, there would still be a substantial discharge to the Bay, the arrow going off to the right. Starting on the left is the water that would go to the local, that is, in Palo Alto, and specifically within the fence line of the sewage treatment plant, for further treatment...
specifically within the fence line of the sewage treatment plant, for further treatment, salt removal. And then it would be blended back with the treated effluent from the plant, 50/50, and we'd produce this enhanced recycled water, as we called it. And we're using that term recycled water to mean non-potable water. So even though we've removed salt, it's still not of a potable quality. And this is primarily irrigation, water, some toilet flushing, and hopefully some cooling tower water in the future. So that's the one part of the agreement, is building this local plant. And then the second part of the agreement is the down arrow off to the right, and that's the roughly half of the effluent that the Water District may take from the sewage treatment plant and conduct a regional water reuse program with it. That could be a plant that produces potable water, and its location is not determined. Even whether they'll do this is not determined. So we have kind of a dotted line going down to the right. And then the next slide, just to give a little more detail about the agreement. The parties of the agreement are Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Valley Water. And I think we've gone over the fact that there's six partners to the plant. The two biggest ones are Palo Alto and Mountain View. They're the only ones currently using recycled water, and therefore, they're the parties in this agreement. The minimum flow delivery is sort of a term of art in the agreement. It's nine million gallons a day, and that's about half of the water produced by the Regional Water Quality Control Plant. The term could be up to 76 years, and this is a little complicated, and we've got another slide on that in a moment. So the local plant that's removing salt and producing non-potable water would be owned and operated by Palo Alto. It would be located within the Regional Water Quality Control Plant fence line. And the Water District would be contributing $16 million of an estimated cost, total project cost of $20 million. Then the other part of the agreement, which we're calling the regional program, if it goes forward, would potentially purify about half of the Regional Water Quality Control Plant's output, the nine MGD. Valley Water would pay initially $200,000 a year for up to 13 years, sort of an option payment to reserve the right to have that nine million gallons for that 13 years. Then, if they decide to take this water, the Valley Water District would pay $1 million a year for the effluent initiating at the time that the program, their program starts So the timeline is divided into three rows here. So I'm starting at the top row about the local plant, the salt removal facility within Palo Alto. You can see that, under the agreement, we have 13 years to get that built. The Water District is providing the 16 million, but we have to do it within 13 years. The operation of the plant then has to be for at least 30 years. Probably it would be substantially longer, but that's the minimum that the agreement requires. The next row talks about the regional program. And here, the Water District has that sort of same amount of time, 13 years, to decide whether they're actually going to do this transfer or not. They could continue the option, that is, they could start paying the $1 million now, as if they were taking the water, but not take it. That can only happen, though, for 10 additional years. In other words, even if they're paying the $1 million a year, they can only do that for another 10 years, for a total of 23, which is shown on the diagram. If they do take the water and are using it, then the agreement would be as long as 76 years, and that's shown on the diagram. One of the concerns has, along by a number of people, been the length of this time, 76, potentially 76 years. So a provision was negotiated, a creative one suggested by the district, for this alternative water supply, the third row on this timeline. And under this provision, Palo Alto can request an alternative water supply. Here, we've potentially allowed the Water District to have roughly half of the plant's effluent. So starting as soon as one year from the agreement, Palo Alto can request a sort of substitute water supply from the district. The district has 16 years to provide it. They have to come up with something, and it would be paid for, of course, by Palo Alto, and it would be at cost. So the alternative water supply would be made available to Palo Alto at cost. And then that situation has to continue, that is, providing that water for that same period of time, the 76 years potentially total. A subject that has come up a number of times is, well, what is the, and what are the environmental benefits of Palo Alto and Mountain View entering into this agreement with the Water District? So we've bulleted out five of them here, and it's important enough that I'll just go over them. First, it reduces the countywide reliance on imported water. Second, it reduces Tuolumne River water that is currently used for irrigation. That is, we'd be substituting and using the water that we produce locally as enhanced non-potable water. That would reduce the irrigation use of Tuolumne River water, saving it. Thirdly, it improves the quality of the water. That was what we started with, was trying to reduce the salinity of our non-potable water that's primarily used for irrigation. Why? Because it's been determined that it has a negative effect on redwood trees, and possibly there are other salt-sensitive species that would also be helped by removing the salt. And the fourth one is sort of aligned with it. Since we're improving and placing less salt on the ground with our irrigation water, there's less of a chance that that salt would migrate down into the groundwater and decrease the quality of the groundwater. And then lastly, the whole program increases, decreases the bay discharge. And we know that there's, some bay discharge is a good thing, but too much changes the ecosystem, and that has already occurred to some extent. That is, we've converted salt plants to brackish plants, and so we don't want, this would help in that regard. So our last slide is a summary of the recommendations. We actually have three recommendations now, and I'll go over the third new one. First is approving the SEQA work that was done, an amendment to a pre-existing EIR. Secondly, authorizing the city manager to sign the agreement with Mountain View and the Water District. And then the new one is stated in the at-places memo that you received. And I don't know if Beth had a chance to add it yet.
It's in the subject to non-substantial changes. I thought that's the non-substantial changes.
You're saying it's in the slide?
Yep.
I'm sorry. So it's embedded in the slide. I thought it wasn't going to be. So it allows, it gives authorization to the city manager to make minor, non-substantial changes. The reason we need that is, we have two other entities, Mountain View and the district, also taking action on this. Mountain View tonight, the district on December 10. And there could be minor changes that grew out of that. So we're seeking authorization for the city manager to make those changes. And that's our presentation.
Thank you. We now go to the public?
I'm sorry. So we were hoping that Gary Cremen could be part of our staff, staff of the Water District.
Gary's first on the list of the public, so.
Oh, okay.
So, perfect timing, right? And so, hi, Gary. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, council folks. First of all, on behalf of the Water District, its board, its staff, we'd like to offer condolences to the family, city, and residents on the death of your employee, Mr. Oka Mina, if I pronounced that right. It's in the utility business, there's always risks, so we're cognizant of that. Again, we'd like to offer condolences. All right. You've heard about this a couple times, in fact, a lot. I'm really going to stand here to answer any questions you have with Mr. Hall, but I think we've been through this. The only addition I'd like to make is, all the financial numbers are indexed by the CPI over time. So when it says a million, that will be going up over time. And that would be the highest amount of money ever paid for effluent in the state of California by a factor of three. So I'm not saying it's a good deal, but I represent you all, so I think it's a great deal. So I stand here if you need to call me back.
Thanks very much.
Okay.
Garth Hall, also from the Valley Water District.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth and city council members. So I'm Garth Hall, the Deputy Operating Officer of Water Supply at Valley Water. So you've heard from me before, I won't repeat, but I wanted to focus on one thing that I think is very important. So we, together with you plus City of Mountain View, are talking about a very long-term partnership compared to most others that we have entered into. This is long. It's good, it's good in a way that we can look at the process that we have worked through to get here. I think one of the first and most ready tests of a partnership in formation is how well the teams are giving and taking, understanding each other, and building trust with one another. And it took well over a year for us to get here. A lot of that time was trying to figure out how's this going to work, how it would work for the city, listening and building trust with each other, that when Palo Alto staff said this and they needed that, we listened, we believed it, and vice versa. And same with Mountain View. So I just wanted to indicate, as one important indicator of what we've already accomplished so far, I think, is a really solid bond of trust between us, because we're going to need trust as time goes on. And I wanted to just recognize your staff for that.
Thank you very much. Dave Warner.
So my name's Dave Warner. First, thank you for applying your leadership to our recycled water. Particularly thanks to Allison Cormac and Tom Dubois, and even more thanks to Phil Bobel, Carla Daly, and Karen North, who have been just terrific. My first point, we shouldn't think of this as wastewater. Remarkably, our effluent is a precious local source of sustainable, drought-resilient water that's being snapped up all over the state. It's why Valley Water is trying to tie us up, giving them an option on our effluent. Point two, the decision you're making tonight is choosing between two alternatives. A, exploring direct potable reuse, which has three big benefits. First, making one-third to one-half of our water supply sustainable. And second, drought resilient. And remarkably, third, at the same time, lowering our residents' future cost of water. That's remarkable. Then the other alternative is B, going with the transfer agreement as is, which means putting off to a future city council the sustainability and resiliency decisions for Palo Alto. In essence, saying that sustainable and resilient water supplies are not a near-term Palo Alto priority. As you know, the transfer agreement does not make any portion of Palo Alto residents' water supply sustainable. The one MGD of NPR water, non-potable, will go only to a small number of users. The option to get additional supply will likely be expensive, as Water Districts will have already acquired the low-cost solutions, as Valley's Water is doing right now with this agreement. And by the way, the $1 million annual payments translates to about $300,000 for Palo Alto. The Utilities Department has raised thoughtful concerns to direct potable reuse, such as, the regulations might not be out until 2023, or we don't have the infrastructure and expertise. But there are a myriad of reasonable solutions to overcome these objections. So please don't let these kind of issues cloud the core decision you're making. If you are concerned about these issues, allow time for solutions to be proposed. The best answer, in my opinion, is to change the terms of the transfer agreement so that we get three MGD of potable water rather than one MGD of non-potable water. But that will take tough negotiations and perhaps walking away from the agreement. And if we do have to walk away, we'll have other good options open to us. Phil Bobel might say, we could get the three MGD of DPR water on our own, separate from this agreement. I don't agree. The only way that would work is if the three MGD has equal priority to all the other demands on the effluent, which means changing the agreement. Otherwise, there isn't enough for all the needs. And if you don't, if you're not agreeing with that, just look at the language in the agreement regarding shortages of effluent. The decision you're making today is whether or not to defer Palo Alto's water sustainability resilience to another day, and by the way, to forego reducing our residents' future water bills. Thanks so much for all the efforts on this and for listening to me.
Thank you. Herb Borak.
Good evening, Mayor Philseth and council members. I submitted a letter to you by electronic mail before 6 o'clock started the meeting on both this item and item nine on consent. Since you rearranged the agenda prior to 7 o'clock, I did not have an opportunity to speak separately on item nine, so I'll try to keep all my comments together, since I believe these two items are part of the same project. The addendum for the EIR was submitted to the State Clearing House on September 19 and was there for a period until October 3, according to the staff report. As I explained in my letter, you have adopted a motion in March on the sea level rise adaptation policy, and that you should have a sea level rise adaptation plan from staff by December. I provided you reference and links to slides from the March presentation on sea level rise that shows that significant parts of this project, the pipeline, will be inundated during, by water, by sea level rise during the proposed terms of this agreement. The environmental impact report needed to address that, because that's a significant effect that this project would be involved in, that would essentially create a project that would be contrary to council policy. And for that reason, an addendum is not sufficient and requires a subsequent or supplemental Staff makes what I regard as a gratuitous comment about the availability of the addendum. An addendum is not required to go through the same public process as a supplemental or subsequent EIR, but staff lets us know that for anyone who thought of looking at the State Clearing House website, or going down to the State Clearing House in Sacramento, they could have looked at a copy of the addendum. Since the regulations don't require any... any public notice, apparently one wasn't made, that it was available during that period of time, because if such a notice was made, it would have been mentioned in the staff report. So, the fact is that neither the agenda item that you had on consent or this one should be approved for the failure to have an adequate EIR. And the reason you don't have an adequate EIR is that it has not discussed the significant effects of the plan that you've yet to make in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Bennett.
Hello, my name is, I was quick. Hello, my name is Keith Bennett, and I like the concept of recycling and reusing water. As you know, I'm interested in ground, quite interested in groundwater. I read the final agreement, which was sent just this afternoon. However, I do not clearly understand what Palo Alto gets from this arrangement with Valley Water, and I have questions in a few particular areas. How much, if we put in the desalination plant, can we reduce our purchases of Tuolumne River water, and therefore our costs? And how much do we get when we sell the water for irrigation? Secondly, it's not clear who pays for maintenance of the desalination facility, especially 30 to 50 years from now, like when it needs a new roof, new pipes, and the sea level rise affects its costs. Well, it looks like we have a fixed cost reimbursement, a fixed rate reimbursement agreement, but our costs probably are not fixed. And I don't know how much it costs to operate this desalination plant. Maybe it was in the materials, but I did not see it. We get a few hundred thousand dollars, we get $200,000 or $100,000 a year, and then some more once we get water, but the costs go immediately. And then what happens if more or less water is available? There's a lot of verbiage in there, but I couldn't quite follow it. Who gets cut and who gets extra, and who gets how much money? So, it would be really helpful to have a clear chart, because we might not be able to easily control how much effluent we have because there may be structural changes to our water supply, not just drought, like someone would say you get half as much as the regular policy. Thank you.
Thank you. We now return to council, and I'm going to go first to Councilmember Dubois. Do you want to add anything to this?
Thank you. So, thanks to Phil, Carla, to Valley Water and City Mountain View. Actually, just quickly wanted to follow up on some of the public speakers. So, can staff answer Herb's question about, like, why are, why we don't need a supplemental EIR? Why or why not? I know Smolley stepped out, maybe she could address that.
Cara North is going to help us out here.
Hi, Cara North, Watershaft Protection Manager. So, Herb Borak was talking about the environmental addendum that we provided that you're, it's in front of you for council approval. The main reason is that we don't need the, we did notify, it was on our public website, and it went to the State Clearing House, the addendum. And it's an addendum to the EIR, because the EIR, when we looked at doing Phase Three, the pipeline to Stanford Research Park, said that the mitigation that we would need to do a salt removal facility for the redwood trees. So, this is now an addendum because that parcel of land within the treatment plant is just for the small salt removal facility. Is that clear?
Yes, there would eventually be an EIR for a large plant.
Yes, for the regional facility that, that Valley Water is looking for the regional transfer, of course, there'll be an EIR for their project. This is just for our small salt removal facility that's on the footprint of the wastewater treatment plant.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then I think I know the question, the answer to Keith's question about who pays for maintenance. I think essentially, we own the small plant.
That's right.
Valley owns the large plant.
Palo Alto would own and operate and maintain the local plant.
So, I just want to say top line, I think this is a good deal for Palo Alto. I think it's a fair deal for all the parties involved. You know, the headline really should be that we're going to get millions of dollars invested in Palo Alto. Plus, we get some water robustness through this additional water supply. And then I think we talked about this at the study session, just more recycled water is good for the region, entire region in general. Mountain View's a major partner in the wastewater plant, they want to move forward with this. In terms of kind of thinking about our water supply and water demand, you know, we have a large allocation from SFPUC, which we talked before, in emergency, we have the ability to pump groundwater. And now, while this would take some time, we have a potential third water supply through Valley Water. It is a complex agreement. I've been involved with the Joint Water Recycling Committee for three years now, and it's taken, I think, about a year just to negotiate this agreement. And it is complex, but I think it's a good deal. I know, kind of talking to some folks, that there were some questions about where would the large plant be located. That hasn't really been determined. I mean, I'd like to see it be in Palo Alto. There's a possibility of potentially looking for some additional land near the plant, but that's kind of TBD. The other kind of thought out there was, you know, direct potable reuse is great, why don't we just do this on our own? And I would love to do that, but I just don't see how Palo Alto and Mountain View can afford a $120 million plant. And so, that's why I really support this deal. Valley Water is going to pay us basically a 23-year option on our treated sewage. They're going to give us money to build the small plant for Palo Alto and Mountain View. And then if they decide to build a larger plant, it could be in Palo Alto, or it could be elsewhere. So, you know, I think, again, this is a great example of regional cooperation. Valley Water, through those processes, helped us develop our North County Water Plan, and, you know, getting at least a $4 million gallon a day treatment plant for high-quality recycled water is a good step forward for Palo Alto. So, I don't know if there's a lot of discussion. I guess I'd like to go ahead and just make the motion.
Second.
I'd make the staff's recommended motion. And I think Councilmember Cormack.
Moved by, moved by Councilmember Dubois, and seconded by Councilmember Cormack. Care to speak further to your motion?
No, I think I just did.
Councilmember Cormack.
Councilmember Dubois covered. The overview, I appreciate that. You know, I share his thoughts and comments. I do just want to say this is a first step towards the future where we may not have enough water due to changes in state law, climate change, et cetera. It's absolutely legitimate to be concerned about the length of this contract. You can't know what the future's going to bring, but we do have an option in here that's a bit of an insurance for our water supply. And I think the partnership that is developing and being demonstrated will be important as we go through. I have one question, so I wonder if we could go to Slide 7, perhaps? So, and it's about salinity, because I'm confused. So, if you look at the top right-hand side, that effluent is too fresh for the bay. Is that what I'm hearing? Yes? And how do we square that with the water on the bottom-left side, which is too salty for redwood trees? Just, just help me understand how this could be.
Well, different species, right? So, the plants in baylands are salt-loving plants currently, right? So, this is primarily pickle weed, that's what you mostly see out there. It needs saltwater. Redwood trees, as you know, are totally different ecosystem. They belong up in the hills where they get rain, which is very low in salt. So, that's the basic difference, is salt-loving plants, freshwater-loving trees.
I get that part. I get that part. I'm still trying to understand how we're releasing salty water that's making the bay fresher, and is it just have to do with numbers? Can maybe, is it, the TDS would be helpful here?
Okay. So, the salinity of the bay is about 20,000 parts per million.
Okay.
And the salinity of our water is about 1,000 parts per million.
There you go.
So, it's much fresher than the bay. I see what you're getting at now. But redwood trees don't even like 1,000, you know? So, actually, it's 800.
This is actually very helpful. This is actually very helpful, I think, for people who are not following this at this level of detail. Okay, great. I particularly appreciate staff's thorough response on Page 194 and 195, 17C, to the concerns expressed by a member of the community. I think you've done an exemplary job of working with the community. I think we've all learned something in the process, so I thank you for that. And then finally, I just want to say that there've been good improvements since the prior version. I noticed the mention of the equalization tank, talking about specifying actions during the drought, what happens if Valley Water does and doesn't exercise its option, and also addressing daily versus annual average flow. That wasn't something that occurred to me, so thank you to whoever somewhere figured out that that might be an issue. So, with that, conclude.
Councilmember Niss.
So, Phil, I am looking for the slide or the comment that you made regarding the Tuolumne versus the Hetchatchee.
The environmental benefits?
Yes, that's it. Reduces Tuolumne River. And it does, but isn't it essentially Hetchatchee by the time we use it?
Yes, it comes from the Hetchatchee reservoir. Sometimes it's referred to as that. We use the word Tuolumne here, that's the river coming out of the Hetchatchee.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But essentially, I guess it reduces that, but particularly, I think it would reduce our reliance on Hetchatchee, which is
Right.
just a fine point, but I think it's the way we usually, it took me a long time to know.
We usually refer to it as the reservoir, not the river.
There were a number of years when I didn't.
There had been a lot of talk about the Tuolumne.
Yeah, yeah, right.
So, we showed it here.
I think there's been more talk about that since Peter Druckmeyer got involved with it than before. So, thank you. That's all I needed to know. And I also want to thank Gary and the other members who are here from the Water District, who were very kind in explaining what this is, and being available for other questions, and followed up right until today. So, just take that back, Gary, if you would. Thank you, and I intend to support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, thank you, staff, for bringing this forward, and thank you for, for all the members that spoke. Can you guys hear me okay? So, just kind of big-picture point of view, I think about a year or so ago, we transferred about 21 gallons of water rights to East Palo Alto, because we said that, I think staff said that we have lots of water, and we don't have to worry about a drought situation. But one of the, one of the arguments made in this program was that this could hedge against a drought situation. So, I'm just trying to square, how could we have so much water to give our water rights away for free, yet at the same time, we need to have a wastewater treatment, or a desalination plant, or I guess what do you want to call it, to provide more fresh water for us? I'm just trying to understand how that, how could we have the same, how, how, on one hand, could we give away water rights, and then on the other hand, we need to build this plant for $21?
So, I think there's kind of two parts to that answer. One is our relationship with East Palo Alto is a special one, and at the time that our neighbors were under duress and unable to develop, we stepped up and did the right thing and gave them enough of a boost in the amount of water that they are able to buy from San Francisco so that they could continue with the development that they needed for their economy. The second part of the answer is what really happens in a drought. The largest factor in a water supply shortage to how much water we all, as wholesale agencies, receive is based on what we have been using, not our individual supply guarantee. That is a very, that is a small factor in the formula that figures out how to split up that pie of available water in a water supply shortage, but the overwhelming factor is how much we've been using. So, the deal that we agreed to do with East Palo Alto to help them out as our neighbor had a very, very small impact on what would happen to Palo Alto during a drought, because the largest factor is what our actual water use is, not what our individual supply guarantee is.
I see. Okay, thank you for explaining that. I think one of the reasons why Palo Alto's water usage went down, at least I know my own personal water usage went down, was because a lot of us turned off the water to our lawns, stopped watering our trees. Now, I think trees dried, trees died because of lack of water. And so, I guess I'm just trying to, you know, like, I'm actually, in general, I like the concept of you were using wastewater, making it portable, and using it for gray water and landscaping. I think that's generally a good idea. But, you know, I'm just thinking about how this could be viewed from the point of view of our residents, right? We, we could have had Hetchatchee water directly, but now we're going to resort to recycled or treated wastewater, right? And, and so, it just, I don't know, it just makes me kind of think about, like, what did we do last year? So, I, I, I'm just, that's what I was trying to understand, how can we, at some, at one, at, at, both at the same time, have so much water, right, that we can give it away, and at the same time, need to do something like this? So, I think that helped explain it, so thank you. Okay, the second part of this that I'm trying to understand is, and it's something that one of the speakers that came up earlier spoke about, which is, what do we get out, what is our return on investment? So, I just want to make sure I understand this. So, let me first think about, in terms of what is our investment? So, our investment is, we have the $1 million, right, that we have to pay. Is that correct?
I think you're referring to our, the local plant, or Palo Alto's share of the 20 million would be about 1 million.
So, we have the $1 million, so we have $1 million, so that's one part of our cost. I think the other one I heard is maintenance costs, right? There's maintenance costs that we have to have, correct? Because we're running it, so we have to bear all of that, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we pay all of that ourselves?
The Water District, part of the purpose of that $200,000 payment for the first, at least 13 years, or potentially 13 years, is for maintenance.
Okay, so that, does that cover all?
To clarify, though, I think the question was whether we're paying for all of the maintenance ourselves, as in City of Palo Alto. The correct answer is, it's the partners, partner agencies. So, it's all of the agencies that contribute to the operation of the plant.
Okay, so, so basically, this $200,000 we get offsets any and all maintenance costs that we have for this plant. Is that, is that, is that correct?
Well, the $200,000 covers more than maintenance, if that's what you're asking. And long-term, it won't, it's only for a set number of years, so it won't cover all the costs over the long term.
Oh, I see, okay. And I, but I think, I also read in here that it could go up to, the payment could go up to $300,000, right?
No, it goes up to a million if they actually take the water.
No, no, I'm talking about our portion. It's only, it goes up to, the person that we could get, it could go up to about $300,000, is that right?
Of the million?
Yeah.
That's what was said earlier as a rough estimate.
Report here, but.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sort of trying, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of new to this, so it's kind of a new agreement, so I'm trying to understand what this means. So, so anyways, I guess what I'm trying to understand is kind of cash going in and cash coming out. So, we have the maintenance costs, which it sounds like the $200,000 may not cover all of it. But, but the amount that we get might go up to $300,000, so that'll, that'll be good, right? Does this $300,000 cover all of our maintenance costs?
$300,000 would cover the maintenance costs.
All of it, any foreseeable future, even if.
Well, maintenance.
This is, this is a 30-year agreement or something like that, right?
Yeah, so, maintenance transitions into sort of rebuilding over time, and it wouldn't cover rebuilding.
Okay, and who would recover rebuilding?
That would have to be a new plan. We'd have to have a new plan.
Okay, okay, so that's kind of like a big question mark, but that's down the road. We'll figure out when we get there, I guess, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I also read that we're going to seek a $22 million loan, is that right?
I'm sorry.
Palo Alto will seek a $22 million loan for this project?
We're seeking a loan for it.
Yeah, $22 million, right?
That's yet to be determined, whether we'll have the full amount or some portion thereof.
Okay, well, in the report, it said 22 million, so I was just trying to understand. Okay, well, in the report, it said 22 million, so I was just trying to understand.
That would be the maximum.
The maximum, okay, so maximum loan would be 22 million. And is it fully secured by Palo Alto, or is it being secured by everyone else as well?
It would be secured by Mountain View and Palo Alto.
Okay, so our two cities, and, and the ratio of this securitization would be what in terms of who's securing, like, would Mountain View cover 75%? Would we cover 25%? Or is it half-half? What's, what's the breakdown?
So that ratio is approximately correct. We'll have to negotiate that with Mountain View, but they use about 75% of the recycled water, the, at build-out, and we plan to use about 25% of it. So most of these costs for the recycled water for the local plant gets split along those lines.
Okay, and what about the loan interest? Who covers that? Is that Palo Alto, because we're getting the loan, or is it going to be shared among the different agencies?
It would be shared by Palo Alto and Mountain View.
Okay, and is that specified, how that's going to be broken out?
Just for clarification, I think this is somewhat speculation, because we would, in order to do a loan, be coming back to the council with the proposed terms. So the terms would be specific at that point in time. I think the council's already approved our ability to apply for the loan, but again, the specifics of that are, is a future council action.
I see, okay. And so, okay, so, so, but we get $16 million from Valley Water, right?
Correct.
So why do we need to get a loan? Because we'll get that money upfront. So why do we need to have a loan?
That's what I said, it's a potential maximum of that amount, and we're keeping it open for now. Valley Water, to date, has said they are not wanting to be part of that loan, but we're leaving it open so that they could be. If not, then the maximum amount would be about 4 million, which would be the Mountain View-Palo Alto portion.
Okay, I mean, since we're like the minority owner of this, why, why are we taking the loan out of Mountain View?
Why are we what?
Why are we taking the loan out? Why is Palo Alto taking the loan out instead of Mountain View?
Well, that's how the state system works, is the owner and operator applies for the grant or loan.
Okay, so it sounds like, it sounds like the long-term maintenance replacement cost, the interest of a loan, still have to be kind of figured out how that's divvied up later on, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Currently, currently, it's not negotiated?
The details aren't negotiated.
Okay, and then, I assume this is going to be in Palo Alto, is that right?
The local plant would be within the fence line of the sewage treatment plant in Palo Alto.
Okay, so do you, did you factor in, like, the cost of, I assume it's not very big, but do you factor in, like, how many, what is the cost of, of having it in Palo Alto? Like, because, so we're contributing $1 million plus the land that it sits on, correct?
Yes, the, the land is, is already dedicated to the sewage treatment plant that we're talking about.
No, I understand, but I'm saying it's, it could be used for something else, but I'm just saying, because there's inherent costs of land, whether it's been pre-allocated or not, there's a, there's a inherent value of it, X dollars per square foot, right?
Yes.
How many, how many square feet is a lot?
Is what?
How much, how many square feet is this going to be?
Out of the 25-acre sewage treatment plant, this is going to be on the order of a quarter of an acre.
Quarter acre, okay, so just a quarter acre in Palo Alto is probably worth several million dollars at least, right?
Well, if it could be used for anything else, I suppose that's correct.
Okay, so, so our contribution is going to be $1 million cash. It sounds like the maintenance costs will be offsetted. We're donating about several million dollars worth of land value.
Councilmember, I think that last piece is pretty speculative, because again, it's within the perimeter of the plant, so it's not like that land could be used for anything else, other than plant operations.
Okay, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I'm just, what I'm, what I'm trying to do here is, because it's not, there's not a table in the report somewhere that I could see, that kind of itemized all the stuff we're giving and all the stuff we're getting. And so I'm just trying to, you know, just mentally put it together.
Understood. I think that that one particular line item is, is a bit of a stretch, in terms of the value of that land.
The land value is $0, is that what you're saying?
I would say it's only valuable for plant purposes.
Okay, but I would still argue that quarter acre, it's got to be worth something, it's probably more than a dollar, I would say.
Fair enough.
Okay, so there's some, some amount of land value in there, and the amount, I agree, probably is debatable, but it's probably more than a dollar. And, okay, so that's, that's all of our costs. Is there anything else that we're doing to contribute to this?
I think you've hit on all the major points.
Okay, so let me, let me look at what do we get out of it then, right? So that's, that's our investment in terms of return on investment. So I'm just trying to understand, what is our return now? So our return is that we get between $200,000 to $300,000 a year, but that's really just going to cover our maintenance, and not even the long-term maintenance, correct?
It wouldn't cover all of the long-term maintenance, no.
Yeah, okay. And we also, basically, we basically, I guess, have the right to reuse this water, right, at cost?
Well, the partners, it's a little bit complicated, but some of the partners own the water. And so if you're thinking of just Palo Alto and not the regional plant, it's not true that Palo Alto owns all that water.
Okay, so we would have the right just on the water, the sewer water that Palo Alto contributed?
Right.
Okay.
Well, and possibly some other, but not all of it.
Okay, no, that's, that's fair. So just for our portion of it, so we would get, we would get the right to use our portion of the water, of the sewer water that's been treated at cost? Is that the way to think about it?
At least that, yes.
At least that, okay. And what else do we get out of this?
Well, we tried to summarize the benefits. Would you like me to go over those again?
No, 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 I'm just trying to think of, I'm just trying to think of the return. So because cash-wise, really, it's, it's a, it's a wash at best, right? In fact, we're probably losing money on it. You know, having the benefit of being, having extra water use is, is a good one, right? That, having that option's good, and having it kind of at the cost, sounds like a good benefit, right? I mean, a good direct benefit to the city, so I get that, right? And I think the other, only other benefit that I heard you mention, or at least I could glean from this, this report here, is that there's environmental benefits, right? And that there'll be less usage of the Tuolumne water, and maybe less bad discharge to the bay and other stuff like that, so there's some environmental benefits, right?
Right, and we only summarized the environmental benefits on the slide. Brad is reminding me that, you know, we talked about reducing Tuolumne River water, so when you do that, you also reduce the cost of buying that water.
Okay, okay, but there's a cost of treating the water too, that we have to pay for?
Well, we'd still be treating the water to the same level.
Okay, okay, and now, to the environmental benefits, I would argue these environmental benefits should benefit everyone that's using our sewer plant, correct? I mean, it should benefit all the other cities, all six other cities that are using, or entities using this, right? So in some ways, it's, while we are being good citizens for our sewer wastewater, we're also helping other cities beyond just Mountain View and Palo Alto, right? It's Stafford, it's, 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 you know, Mountain View, it's, not Mountain View, all other six entities, right, part of this. So everyone, everyone is becoming better citizens of the world by, by doing this, but it's just Mountain View and Palo Alto that are paying for it, right?
The reason, yes, for now, and the benefits to the other cities is something we'll be negotiating over the course of the next year. So the other four partners, we'll be going to them and negotiating smaller agreements with the four of them. So their exact participation and their exact costs are not known yet. We'll be doing that over the next year.
Okay, it would seem reasonable to me, because of the environmental benefits, that all the other cities would kind of share equally according to the amount of sewage that they're contributing to the plant. Would that not be a fair assessment?
Well, some benefits go that way. If you, the environmental benefits don't all go to all of them, we'd have to go over them one by one.
Okay, 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 so just to summarize then, just to make sure I fully understand this, there's a million dollars of cash we pay out, there's long-term maintenance costs that we have to bear, maintenance costs is a wash, there's a loan that we have to get out, the interest rate, and, you know, who pays for long-term maintenance is kind of up in the air right now. What we get out of it is the right to get, use water, right, our, our own sewer water that's been treated, and environmental benefits, but that's really a shared benefit across all the cities, right? Oh yeah, then the other, I guess, the other part that we, we contribute is, you know, a quarter acre of Palo Alto land, right? So that's, so in terms of return on investment, that's the way to think about it, right? Am I, am I missing something here?
I think you've hit on all the subject areas.
Okay, okay, so I guess I'd like to hear from Gary, if, Gary's still there. Gary, can you tell us why this is a screaming good deal for Palo Alto?
Thank you, councilperson Tanaka. We, we forgot one benefit, by the way, the $16 million. You know, that wasn't part of your cash in and cash out, that you get a plant that's worth $16 million that you'd have to buy with Mountain View. So you'd have to come up with actually $20 million. We're coming up, the Water District's coming up with 16 of the 20, so when you think of cash in and cash out, let's not forget about that.
Okay, let me make sure I understand this. So we have to spend roughly $20 million to build this, right?
But the Water District's contributing 16 million of the 20, and then number two, when you talk about benefits, the other cities don't have recycled water, other than Mountain View, so they don't get a lot of the benefits. So it's actually just Palo Alto and Mountain View get most of the benefits. And cities like Los Altos aren't even on Tuolumne River.
No, no, I guess my point was more that, like, Los Altos, for instance, we would take their sewer water and rather than having the bigger environmental impact of having untreated or less-treated sewer water, we are helping to treat it. We're making this a better plant for everyone, for all the users of this plant, right?
Only if Los Altos wants to be part of it. Right now, it's, they haven't even been asked, to be honest.
Okay, okay.
Nothing against them or anything like that.
So, so.
You get to be special.
Yeah, so I think you actually bring a good point. So, so, so Palo Alto would own the plant fully outright, so that means that if we, let's say, one day, we decide that, heck, we want to sell our, our, we want to sell this, we could sell it for $20 million and recover money, is that, is that, we have, we have unfair rights to do that? Is that, so we have, we have the title to this? Is that what's?
The small plant you do, right?
Small plant we do.
Well, Palo Alto would own the small plant, that's right, but there's another provision that says that the Valley Water District has the right of first refusal to buy the plant.
Okay.
The whole plant, not just this new piece.
Okay, so the whole plant, you mean the whole sewer plant, or just?
Yes.
Okay, and?
Right of first refusal.
Right, okay, and, and how much, how much, is it, is it, is the price fixed, or has it been negotiated, or?
It would have to be negotiated.
Okay, so we could ask for a lot of money, and they might say, no way?
That's right, it's a right of first refusal.
Right of first refusal, okay, okay, that makes more sense. Okay, so, so, so basically, we would own full title and rights to this plant completely? Is that, is that what I'm hearing then, except for the fact that it's a first right of refusal?
I'm sorry, my neighbor was in my ear here.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, make sure I understand. So, so basically, we would own the full rights and title of this $20 million plant?
The $20 million plant, yes.
And then, and we would have the right to sell it, mortgage it, do whatever, what we feel like to do with it? Is that, is that truly true?
Well, we'd have to speak to the Water District about that provision I just mentioned, and whether, the language is fairly general, I don't know that it relates to components, we'd have to discuss that with the Water District.
I do want to add, we don't own any sewage plants or waste plants, and I don't think we want to be in the business of owning them. We don't have a wastewater permit, we don't have an NDS permit, so it probably wouldn't make any sense.
I guess the reason why this is important is because it, this actually does determine whether it's a screaming great deal, because so far, it didn't sound like it, but if we own the full title, okay, and rights, right, that are not restricted, then it is a pretty good deal, right? But if, if, if it's not really true, or it's not truly specified yet, then, then it's not. So I guess, I guess that's, that's kind of a really key, key component, right? Because it's, it's like, if we get, you know, I, I guess, first of all, I find it kind of surprising if this is true, because Mountain View's contributing X amount of dollars to it as well, right? Would Mountain View really just say, okay, here's Palo Alto, here's the money, we're just going to trust you, you don't have to worry about any, there's no, there's no enclosures to, to this, to this plant? It seems very.
You can sell the plant if you want, all it is is a rofer.
Tell them?
It's a rofer, right of first refusal. You could sell the plant if you wanted.
Okay, okay, so, I mean, so Molly, in the agreement here, is that, is that specified in there that we have full title and rights to this plant?
Well, it's clear that we own it. It uses those words. I don't know how else to interpret the word "ownership."
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Two.
So I just wanted to, a question from one of the members of the public who asked about the no-shop clause. Is that still in there? Is there a no-shop clause in there?
We, in 2017, not sure, I might not have that date quite right, but we signed a memorandum of understanding with Valley Water that we would partner together to advance water reuse in Santa Clara County. It's not technically a no-shop clause, but we did pledge that we would work together to come up with solutions for the county.
Another question that came up was, you know, why not see what Crystal Springs offer? Is that because Crystal Springs is in San Mateo County and we're only dealing with San Clara?
Well, that certainly would not be in the spirit of partnering with the Valley Water Agency, that is true, but Crystal Springs is owned by the SFPUC, and there, there's no project on the table to put treated effluent in Crystal Springs. That's not a, that's not a project that is on the table at this point.
I see. So in general, I'm supportive of this project, although I do believe that there needs to be some accountability in terms of when, I think one of the matters that Councilmember Tanaka brought up was the water that was provided to East Palo Alto, and then also the de-watering at our construction sites that goes into the bay. So if we're going to move forward, and we are moving forward with this program, there needs to be some accountability of how we wastewater in other areas. I think there needs to be syncing up of some sort. I know there's gallons and gallons, millions of gallons of de-watered from construction sites going out to a bay, and that needs to be addressed very soon, so that this program makes sense also. That's all I want to say.
Okay, well, a great deal of time and effort by a lot of people has gone into this, and I think we're at the point of taking the next step forward. Seeing no other lights on the board?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I respond to Councilmember Tanaka's question?
Yes, and his light has just come up.
So I have consulted with Sandy Lee from my office, who is very familiar with the detailed provisions of the agreement, and the right of first refusal arguably would apply to sale of the portion that you've described, but yes, the, the city owns it and subject to that could, in theory, sell it.
So, yeah, thank you for clarifying that. So that, to me, actually makes this a much more compelling argument. So I guess, a couple loose ends here, and I'm, I don't know how we deal with it, but there's the issue of, like, who? there's the issue of, like, who pays interest on the loans? How do we handle long-term maintenance? Like, who covers that? How do other cities that aren't party to this right now, so, no, not Palo Alto, not Mountain View, for the other cities, other entities, Stanford, Los Altos, et cetera, like, how do we handle, how will this be negotiated? How is, how is this going to be settled with the other cities?
So we're going to spend the next year working with four small partners and determine that...
But isn't it kind of like laying the first out of the barn, right? I mean, if you were already starting to build this and spending all the money, I mean, the other guys are free riders. Why, they'll say, like, keep, keep building, keep going at it, you know, knock yourself out, right? Why would they, why would they come to the table if we have already committed to building this?
So the small plant will benefit Palo Alto and Mountain View, but almost, almost fully. Those are the two entities that are benefited by the local plant. The negotiations that we'll have with the smaller partners will be for them to contribute their effluent to the potential transfer to the district and therefore get a piece of the $200,000 and the $1 million that Valley Water will be paying for that effluent. So that's, that's the negotiation that we'll have there. As far as the long-term maintenance for the local facility, we'll work that out with our partner, Mountain View.
But if we're at full capacity already, then how can we take anyone else on? If, if it's at full capacity using for Palo Alto and for Mountain View, then how could, how could we, how could, how could we take effluent from other cities and process it then?
So there's two different, there's two different directions that the water's going. The, the smaller partners would potentially contribute to that transfer going to Valley Water. The arrow that goes down to the right. The water that's going to the small facility on the left is Palo Alto and Mountain View.
The small partners, the other thing to point out is some of the small partners are really small. Los Altos Hills is 1% to 2%. So Mountain View and Palo Alto make up roughly 80% of the total. So we have different portions of our effluent that we've reserved for certain uses. So we combine that, those reserves with their smallness, and we think we can work this out in the next year.
Yeah, but still, I mean, even if Mountain View and Palo Alto are 80%, we have a 20% free rider, right? Those 20% who aren't contributing then.
Through the mayor, may I potentially address that question?
Yes, you may.
They're not getting the $200,000 growing at CPI at all. It's just going to Palo Alto.
Well, we are not getting either. We're spending it on maintenance, so it doesn't matter.
But they're not getting anything. They don't have...
Neither are we. We're losing money.
Well, you're getting recycled water plus $16 million that you don't have to spend.
Well, yeah, so do we get the title, which is important? So I give you that.
And if you had to buy it yourself, it'd cost $20 million.
Second?
It costs $20 million to build this small plant, and you're getting 16 of the 20.
I do agree that that is a benefit, yeah.
Yeah, but they're not getting any benefit from the small plant because they don't have any recycled water pipes in the ground, and it's too far away for almost all of them.
Yeah, I guess that's, it's not a huge issue, but I mean, I do agree that having the, getting $16 million is actually a good thing, right? So, yeah, so I agree with you on that. And that maybe probably makes up for the other shortfalls, but, okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further lights on the board, all right, seeing no further lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with 6-0 with Vice Mayor Fine absent. Thank you very much. Folks, thanks very much for joining us and all the work to, to this point, and looking forward to the next phase.
We came out from closed session at, what, 6:45 or something like that? So 7:45, 8:15, spent an hour and a half. Why don't we take five minutes now? Because we're probably going to have a fairly lengthy discussion. We're a little bit ahead of schedule anyway. So why don't we all come back at 8:25?
Live from the Palo Alto City Council chambers, tonight as the council passed this move with the water recycling plant. And it decided it tonight fairly quickly after a closed session that we were able to get underway. The new plant was part of a proposed long-term partnership between neighboring communities of Palo Alto, Mountain View, and Santa Clara, Palo Alto, Mountain View, rather, and the Santa Clara Water District to increase local recycling. And this is from a Sarah Tabin piece in the Palo Alto Daily today previewing it. The council was unanimous there. A lot of questioning by a few council members about some of the options. The City Council, the Mountain View City Council, also scheduled to vote on whether to enter into the partnership agreement tonight with the Palo Alto Water District. The plan got a lukewarm reception from environmental activists in Palo Alto during the study session in September. Peter Dreckmeyer, former Palo Alto mayor and policy director for the Tooluma River Trust in Palo Alto buys its own water from San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, which holds unused water in the dams. That means that even if Palo Alto reduces water consumption, the extra water won't be allowed to flow naturally down the river. Esther Nyjenda, a member of Save Palo Alto's Groundwater, said the city should be focused on protecting local groundwater. Valley Water said it will put 16 million toward the Palo Alto plant, which is estimated to cost $20 million. Mountain View would pay $3 million, and about half the water recycled at the plant would not be for drinking, would go to Mountain View. Instead of drinking the water from the new plant, it would be used for irrigation. The backup supply would be used during a drought. And of course, many are wondering, you know, we haven't had any rain yet. We're in fire conditions this week. PG&E is saying there may be some blackouts. Yesterday was toasty, today was toasty. The drought is always something that you're wondering about, are we going to get rain this year? Getting back to her piece in the Palo Alto Daily News, recycling, more water would allow the city to maintain a local supply of water in the event of a drought, according to Karen North of the Public Works Department and Carla Daly of the Utilities Department, who presented the idea in September's study session. The future is here, said North. In other areas, they have been doing this for years. Under the partnership, Palo Alto and Mountain View can purchase water from the Water District, which gives Palo Alto an alternative to SFPUC. Mountain View and Water District also wants to build a $300 million water treatment plant. The location for that plant has not been determined, and water from the large plant might be drinkable. I'm Ben Slarkin, this is KZSU Stanford. Tonight, the, on campus, it is big game week. On campus, there was a beautiful ceremony at Stanford Memorial Church for Coach John Ralston. John Ralston, who led the Stanford Indians then in 1971 and '72 to two Rose Bowl titles. And it was incredible, they beat Woody Hayes' Ohio State Buckeyes with Jim Plunkett to Randy Vitah. Jim Plunkett would go on to be the only Heisman Trophy winner, and he spoke tonight beautifully about how Coach Ralston was so nice to him, how actually, after his senior year in high school, he got cancer, and he didn't think that he would, and the doctor told him he wouldn't be able to play tennis or golf or football for a year, and, and he didn't even know if he could even play football again. And Coach Ralston said, we want you, we want you to come to Stanford. And he would visit his family, his family, his parents, both of whom, I believe, had vision problems. They were in San Jose, they didn't have a car. He'd send coaches down to take care of them and to get them on the campus, and he wanted them to stay and be part of Stanford. And then the following year, he, he started to come back, and he gave them a tryout, and he spoke very eloquently about Coach Ralston. So did, the thing about Coach Ralston is the coaching trees that were in those years at, at Stanford. Among them were Coach Bill Walsh and Sherri Walsh, his wife was there tonight, who Coach Walsh took care of for many years. Mike White, who went on to coach at Cal and then into the pros. And Dick Vermeil, who also coached in, into the pros as well at college level. Of course, you always remember the Philadelphia Eagles, invincible, leading them to Super Bowls, and also the St. Louis Cardinals. Dick Vermeil spoke very eloquently about Coach Ralston and how, how he, how he helped him and how he influenced him. The most important thing, he said, he would, he, there was one year where he was coaching the team, and he was coaching the St. Louis Cardinals, and they hadn't won a game. And he asked Coach Ralston to come speak to the players. He said, what do you speak to a team that hasn't won a game all season? And he came in, he said, I'd love to speak to the team. Came in and he said, remember, boys, the road to Super Bowl is always under construction. And he always had great lines. Act enthusiastic and you'll be enthusiastic. And a lot of people there tonight, Dick Vermeil's speech was very, very inspirational. Pete Lazetic, who played defensive end for those Rose Bowl teams, played his harmonica and talked about being in Montana. And John Ralston went on a recruiting trip in Montana. Now, Pete's father had been a big football hero at the University of Montana, and he had pretty much had everything set up for him to be in his father's footsteps. And John Ralston went into this little town, and he, he was waiting for Pete to get out of high school class because he was going to take he and his dad to lunch. And he went into the school office, and he said, where does, you know, Mrs. Lazetic work? Where does she work? What does, what does, he said, well, she works in a bank. So she's a teller downtown. So he goes downtown, and he waits in line, and he, he starts chatting with her and starts telling her how great Stanford is and how Stanford should be the place for his son. So then they have lunch, and it's, it's a no-go. The dad says no, he's going to stay in Montana. And Pete said that he thought that Stanford was an Ivy League school, and he didn't even know where it was. But when they got home, the mom was saying, you're going to Stanford on a recruiting trip. And that's how he, he got Pete to, to play for him and to come to Stanford. And he said at Stanford, he was blown away by everything that Stanford had that changed his life forever. Mike White, who coached against him at Cal, spoke eloquently and had a poem. And also, the altar had a Stanford, the red and white of Stanford corsage and the blue and gold of Cal, since John Ralston had played football at Cal after the Marine Corps. He played for Lynn Pappy Waldorf for three consecutive Rose Bowls for the Golden Bears. And he also was a coach in their last Rose Bowl, 1959. And he graduated from Cal and went to Utah, was a head coach at Utah State, and led them to the Sun Bowl, 1960 Sun Bowl, and '61 Gotham Bowl, where he coached Merlin Olson of FTD fame and the Los Angeles Rams. He then went on to coach Stanford in the Pac-8 championship. And he said, one of the things that was great about Ralston was he was able to get the president of the university and the athletic director and the dean of students. He was able to make contacts all the time that made it a goal for the team to go to the Rose Bowl. The Rose Bowl was a goal, and a winnable goal for Stanford to do it. And they did, and it was incredible. And then he left, went on to build the Denver Broncos after that. And just before he left the Denver Broncos, they went to the Super Bowl. And then he also went on to, so that really ingrained him in the professional league, and he was involved in various NFL events and NFL teams. And then he went on, and he was part of the USFL. He was coach of the Oakland Invaders of the United States Football League, and they were famous. And of course, Donald Trump, President Trump, was the owner of the New Jersey Generals in that, that league. So that was an upstart league that probably is the most successful challenge in the NFL, well, since the AFL joined them. But that was exciting. And then, of course, he was a great coach at San Jose State, where he was very involved with the program, was there all the time. There's a lot of people there today, this evening, they're at the Faculty Club now, but famous Duff Sundheim, Duff Sundheim, who's a big political guy, played football. I'm sure Steve Player, who played for Stanford, was there. Lot of players were there also. A lot of great people who I know, Debbie Siblich, who is, was great, her, Sib Siblich, just a great football guy and Cal guy and tennis guy. And Lucy Wiedemeyer, who, Coach Wiedemeyer of Los Altos High School, or Los Gatos High School, so famous out of Michigan State and Hawaii, legendary high school coach for Los Gatos High. Lot of great people there. John Ralston was named the 1973 United Press International AFC Coach of the Year and Stanford's Coach of the Century in 1991. And he's a trying to the College Football Hall of Fame, the Rose Bowl Hall of Fame, the Bay Area Sports Hall of Fame, San Jose State, San Jose Sports Hall of Fame, and the sports halls of San Jose State, Stanford, Utah. He's survived by his daughter Terry Zaffano, three grandchildren, three great granddaughters, one great granddaughter, was predeceased by his wife of 46 years, Patty Ward, Ralston and son Larry, Sherri Ralston Brown, and twin sisters of Terry and Virginia Finelli, his life's partner during the passing of his wife's, after the passing of his wife, Patty. John left in life on September 14th, 2019. There's a lot of write-ups, but he will certainly be missed as a dad, coach, and friend. It was on his little, his little quote, it says, this is the best day of your life, and tomorrow is going to be even better. So he really believed in that, and that great optimism that you have, that coaches have, football coaches or any kind of successful coaches. You know, you hear Jim Harbaugh, who was, was of course from Pali High, and then really rebuilt the Stanford program, and now is at Michigan and is making a resurgence for Michigan. Talk about his father, who was a coach, with his enthusiasm, always enthusiastic, ingraining it into him, him and his boys, every day, going for it, making the best day ever. And the Dean Steinwort did the commendation and benediction, and there was beautiful music. The organist, there's a piano, they played Chariots of Fire when...
Let us, what was that word you were looking for? It wasn't congeal?
Well, I, convene.
Convee, what is reconvee?
And we also tried congregate or reconvene, maybe?
Let us, let us anneal and, and move on to the bike bridge item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Brad Eggleston, Director of Public Works. And with me here is Holly Boyd, the Assistant Director of the Engineering Services Division of Public Works. And it's, as you know, taken a number of years for us to reach this point where we are tonight, but we are recommending approval of contracts and a budget amendment to actually begin construction of the Highway 101 bike bridge tonight. And...
It's only taken 10 years.
Close to that. Just to add a little context, I just wanted to say this will add to Fire Station 3, the Charleston-Arastha-Darryl Corridor project, and the California Avenue Garage as another of the 2014 Council Infrastructure Plan projects, that set of nine important projects that will be under construction with. And the Public Works staff is very excited to see this getting underway. And with that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Holly for our staff presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Philsith and Council members. So I'd like to just start off with the presentation with a project overview. So this bridge provides a year-round accessible bicycle pedestrian connection between residences and businesses west of Highway 101 and the walking biking trails in the Baylands east of Highway 101. It also completes the Adobe Creek Reach Trail that provides direct access from East Meadow Drive to West Bay Shore Road and the overcrossing. So I just wanted to go over briefly the project background and timeline. It has a long history. There's really kind of four distinct periods in the project timeline, starting in 2011 with the approval of the feasibility study and work on the preliminary design through 2014. Then council moved to reset the design process and awarded a design contract to BCA in 2016. The site and design process, as well as CEQA and NEPA document, were approved in late 2017. And then, most recently, this past year, Caltrans approved the right-of-way certification encouragement permission, permit, and issued the authorization to proceed to construction. And then lastly, in August, we went out for bids, and tonight we are here for approval of construction contracts. And then upon approval, we would have the anticipated construction period starting in January. So I just kind of wanted to walk through some of the key project elements. This graphic shows the elements, the key elements of the bridge project. I'm not going to follow the alphabetical order, but rather start on East Bay Shore and walk along the bridge. So starting at East Bay Shore, Point G, this is the access point to the Bay Trail connection. Moving along Section C, that's the east approach structure. And then we arrive at Point F, which is the Baylands overlook that includes special art elements, including fencing and seating to mimic nature. Going along Section A, it's the principal span that crosses Highway 101 and East and West Bay Shore roads. And then Section B is the west approach structure that comes down over the Google parking lot. Moving to Section E, which is down below, it's the west approach access that includes a separate sidewalk to access the bridge while still maintaining a bike lane on West Bay Shore Road. Section D is a new bridge spanning the Adobe Creek. And finally, Section H is the Adobe Creek Trail pathway that will connect to East Meadow Drive. So I'd like to go over the project breakdown for the bike bridge. There's a couple tables on this slide. The design is about $3.00 million, $3.5 million. The construction cost of $16.9 million includes the construction contract, 10% contingency, construction administration, the construction management contract, and testing. The salary and benefits, which is really the in-house staff support, is around $2.7 million. So the new total project budget is $23.1 million, which results in a $4.2 million budget shortfall, which is why we were recommending a budget amendment to make up that funding gap. The second table shows the breakdown of the outside funding. The city has received $9.35 million to date for this project. We have also reached out to both the county and Google to request additional funding, and we are still waiting to hear back. So given the magnitude of the budget amendment and the fact that East Palo Alto recently completed a less expensive overcrossing, we wanted to show a comparison and point out some of the reasons why the Palo Alto project has a higher cost. So the table on this slide shows the project cost breakdown for the Clark Avenue Bridge in East Palo Alto, as well as the Palo Alto Bridge. So some of the key differences is that the $12.9 million project budget for East Palo Alto does not include salary and benefits. The Palo Alto Bridge is also about 22% longer than the East Palo Alto Bridge, and it spans both the frontage roads. We also had a longer design duration for a bridge that included additional time and money spent on a design competition. And even after the design competition ended, there was ongoing discussions and design for the optional enhancements for the bridge. Additionally, the Palo Alto Bridge has more site constraints. While the East Palo Alto Bridge lands in a parking lot, the two approaches for the Palo Alto Bridge are in a natural environment in the Baylands, which involve difficult construction because of soil conditions and require additional biological testing and monitoring. And on the western approach, there's additional protection required for working above a creek. Our bridge, the Palo Alto Bridge, has additional or enhanced project elements, including 140-foot bridge over Adobe Creek, an overlook for the Baylands overlook and lighting. The additional bridge alone, the cost is around half a million dollars for the Adobe, to cross Adobe Creek. And finally, the construction market and conditions and cost escalation. The East Palo Alto Bridge was bid in June 2017 and started construction about two years So with that, it takes us to the staff recommendation. So tonight, we are asking council to approve the construction contract and contingency, approve the construction management contract and contingency, approve the grant agreement with Santa Clara County, and approve a budget amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have public speakers on this item? Seeing no public speakers, we return to council. And I have a light from Councilmember Niss.
A little troubling that there aren't any bikers here tonight who are telling us how delighted they are that this possibly will pass. But with that in mind, let me ask two or three other questions. I mean, I don't think my frustration about this taking on, going on 10 years has been hidden at all. I am really puzzled by it. I know we had a special design contest that was not productive and I think was a lesson in having a contest of some kind to choose a design, because as you recall, many of the designs weren't feasible. They couldn't be built. So I think we probably wasted two years on that, maybe even three years on that. But when a project takes this long, we really do pay for it in the end. So East Palo Alto was able to, and I'm glad you put that in there, they were expedient, half the price. You know, I realize there are some differences, but it still is substantially less. So I think this has a number of, really very sound benefits for Palo Alto. The first is that many people use this as a connection to work. This is not only a good connection to heading to any of the companies, including Google, who are slightly to the south, but this can't be used in the winter, when it's rainy, as you probably know. So this makes it a year-round bicycle path. It also is very accessible to the wetlands, which is fun for people to go out, to hike in that area. And also, there's a good viewing from the top of the bridge as well. So when do you actually see it being started? When might dirt be actually dug out of the ground?
Dug out of the ground? My guess would be, if the council approves the construction contract tonight, we have contract routing, bid bonds that need to be obtained, the holidays. My guess is the end of January at the earliest.
It's a good thing we don't have to make money, isn't it? Because we can't move very quickly on stuff. Okay. I don't have any real comments on the actual bridge itself. I know that it's been designed and redesigned and designed again. So clearly, we must have reached a point where it's more than acceptable, or I would think there'd be some people here to speak against it. I don't see anybody doing that. So I guess our biggest discussion tonight has to do with the money. So does one of you want to address that? Because one of the things I would notice is that we have close to $10 million from outside funding. That's quite a bit. It approaches half the cost of the project. So how often have we had a project where at least 40% of the, of the, of the cost is covered by outside sources? No parking garages?
I think it's extremely rare for any of our projects to have this magnitude of outside funding for a project of this scale. Potentially, there have been other examples for things like, for instance, the Magical Bridge Playground or Junior Museum and Zoo might be another example where we've had significant contributions, but those have typically come from community groups rather than various types of grants and even this contribution from Google.
And at least one has a foundation. I don't know about Magical Bridge, but they certainly have an oversight of the bridge as well. So I think we're very fortunate to have this, this outside funding. And I hope that we actually end up with some more outside funding before we're done. So do you want to talk a little about that and how we'll go about it?
Yes. So since we've gotten these numbers and we're aware of the magnitude of this shortfall, we have been in touch with both Santa Clara County and Google. And we're essentially in the mode of waiting to hear back from both of them. Kind of no news really from Google, no news either from the county. I thought the initial discussion seemed a little more hopeful there. You know, as described in the staff report, from that same county mitigation fund, there is currently allocated $1.5 billion for the Matadale Creek Trail project that was also allocated in 2012, I believe. And that project appears like it's not going to move forward. So we're hoping that's a good instance where the decision might not be too difficult to essentially reallocate that funding for this project.
So in particular, Councilmember, as you've made note of the desire to move quickly, Brad and I were just chatting, that if we were successful at obtaining additional funds from the county, you'll see that one of the recommended actions is a, number four, approve and authorize city manager designated execute project grant agreement with the county for grant funding in the amount of $4 million. I think it might be helpful and optimistic if you were to say at least, or $4 million or more. And that if we are successful in gaining their agreement to an additional allocation would hopefully allow us to proceed without coming back to council for additional funds.
So just to say a little more about that, the Santa Clara County funding, the $4 million, is the result of Stanford not doing a trail they agreed to do under the GUP?
Actually, it's separate. There are a few different projects that were planned at the time of the 2000 GUP. I think you're referring to the Stanford Perimeter Trail, which is a separate allocation above and beyond what has already been allocated to the bike bridge. So there's more money. There is the $4 million currently allocated to the bike bridge is part of the Stanford GUP fund, but is not
No, it's part of the perimeter trail. So there was a certain amount, Ed indulged me, I was there. There was a certain amount that Stanford figured they would have to spend on a perimeter trail, one on either end, one on the south end, one on the north end. We worked diligently at establishing that. Midway through that, Stanford threw the ball to San Mateo County and said, here's the money. They gave them eight or nine million dollars. Here's the money. Now, you find a trail. They rejected it. And at that point, San Mateo County gave us the money back, which was between eight or nine million dollars. I asked to have half of it to come to Palo Alto. We came to Palo Alto, we did a press conference on it, with my old friend Dave Cortezi, as a matter of fact, and said that this would go for a bike trail in Palo Alto that I think was already underway. I don't think I dreamt it up. I think it was already underway. But that, that quite truly is just where that money came from. Because that was a long and hard-fought battle, and there is no trail. So this is the leftover money. They finally put in a south trail, but that's south of Page Mill Road. So no trails ended up going on any part of the dish property, which is what our goal was. So the one Bay Area grant, I don't know who got that one, but that's a good grant. And I don't know who approached Google, but good on that one. And, and as you said, perhaps Google would give some more. But I think the county could be a little more generous, and I understand that the mayor has started that process as well. And I think that's really important. So that aside, I don't think we need to say anymore on East Palo Alto, but when the time comes, I'd be delighted to make a motion after everyone else has spoken.
Councilmember Weiss.
So it's pretty amazing how much construction costs have gone up. I mean, from a budget a year ago, it's like 20, 23% increase. That's pretty scary. I'm just curious, again, do we know how much East Palo Alto's bridge cost?
It's in here.
Is it in there?
Twelve.
It's up on the screen. The total project budget is 12.9 million.
Which page is that on?
Well, it should be six, but it's nine. See this?
Yeah. Okay.
Seven.
Great. Yeah. And what's, what's the biggest drivers in the cost difference? It's just again, the environmental sensitivity is the biggest thing?
Let's see the councilmember.
What's that? Sorry.
I'm sorry. I wanted to just start with a clarification of these costs. They're not directly comparable, because when you look at the East Palo Alto Bridge at about 12.9 million, as Holly said, we didn't have their staff oversight cost to include in that. So if you subtract it from our 23.1, our staff costs, you end up, I think, with 20.4 million. So essentially, the Palo Alto project is about $7.5 million more expensive than East Palo Alto's.
And it's more environmentally sensitive area and it's going to be a nicer bridge, I think, right?
So the 22% approximate increase in overall bridge length is a significant factor. You know, that's almost a quarter of additional cost that you could expect. The fact with the, with the construction market and cost escalation, we've been seeing that we're now starting this project two years essentially later, or maybe a little more than that, than East Palo Alto did theirs. So we've, we've got that additional cost escalation baked in, essentially. You know, there's, there's just a number of factors here. There's the costs that we had for preliminary design work and the cost of the design competition. I think there's the, there's the cost of, when you look at our consultant agreements for design and the number of boards and commissions and community meetings and, and just process that we have involved in that, I don't think it's at all comparable to what other, a lot of other cities do during those processes.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's definitely helpful. Another question, as Councilmember Niss was talking, are there, are we eligible for any of the Measure B funds for bike ped to use on this bridge?
I believe that, I believe that we could be. I'm not certain about all the constraints on that funding, but my understanding is that the funding that we already have allocated under Measure B is already allocated to specific projects in the capital budget.
So even though we haven't gotten a grant yet, we've, we've allocated it, I guess?
Yeah. So, so for the, the nondiscretionary funding that we receive, which is a formula-based amount that we can count on receiving, that's already allocated to specific projects. And I'm not aware of discretionary grant-type funds that we can apply for, for this project.
So my last question is really around this idea of asking Google for more money. I mean, tonight, the motion would be to approve the full amount and then deduct 4.2 million from the reserve. Is it more useful, I'm just wondering about the optics of that, is it more useful to deduct 3.2 million and ask staff to seek corporate donations to fill in the gap? deduct 3.2 million and ask staff to seek corporate donations to fill in the gap? Or, you know, if we fully fund it tonight, are you still able to have those conversations about additional donations?
I think we're still able to have those conversations. Our position perhaps is not as strong as it might otherwise be. I'm also not certain, I'd have to perhaps speak with the city attorney about whether on a construction project, we could move forward with executing these contracts when we did not have all the funding actually allocated to the project yet.
Well, I think you've put it well. I mean, again, ultimately, it's a negotiation, but we would be not in a position to move forward if we don't have the funding necessary to execute the contract. So basically, at the point that we need to make a decision.
Can you give us a little color? I mean, did you actually speak with Google or you just, I mean, what was the discussion like? What was the reaction?
Holly and I had a discussion with the Google executive that we've been talking with about the project. I'd also say that over the last six months, and especially since we've been out to bid, we've talked to them several times about, given the market conditions, that these higher costs were a possibility and about the reasons why we thought that might occur. In the discussion we had, the person seemed very open to wanting to get that information and take it to more senior executives and seemed very helpful in terms of seeming like they might be helpful. But this was about a week and a half ago. Most recently, checking back with her at the end of last week, she let us know that decision-makers were out of the country and not able to weigh in at that time.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's it for me. Thanks.
Councilmember Cormack.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. Honestly, this is a bit of a bittersweet moment for me. Nine years of planning and $4 million over the most recent estimate. I'm not quite as excited as I hoped to be here. I will say, at my office hour, someone stopped by last week who was not aware that this was on the agenda and said, and I will not quote directly, "Get the D...bike bridge built." And I said, "Good news. It's on calendar, it's on the agenda for Monday night. Bad news, $4 million over the most recent estimate." You know, my enthusiasm for this project is matched only by my concern over the cost, but I agree with all of the emails that we received, although there aren't public speakers this evening. All of the emails said, "It's been a long time. We want this. It'll be great." And I heartily agree. As the person on council who lives in this area, we have been waiting a very, very long time. Just a couple few questions. On the slide that has the key project elements, Ms. Boyd, if you could put that up, I just want to try and understand, you're on your bike or you're walking? Yeah. So you're over in my neck of the woods, you're over on Meadow, and you're coming down, and you're somewhere north of H in that tree. Which side of the creek are you on for the path? I mean, I see we're building this little bridge D, but like...
So if you're walking from East Meadow Drive down the pathway H, you're going to be on the south side of a...
Okay. So you go ahead and cross over it the first time? You cross over right there at Meadow, and then you come along?
Yeah. You enter on the south side at Meadow.
Yeah, great. That's helpful. Thank you. And then while we're still on Public Works things, I did notice on page 230, items one and two and task one are presumably complete because they were pre-bid inspections, right? It was work that we're asking the construction management team to do. Page 230. Items one and two and task one. I mean, you've already gone out to bid, right? So I don't know how important it is or if it's updated or if they were already on board. I don't quite understand how that works, but it just looks like some of what we're asking them to do has already been completed.
Councilmember Cormack, you're correct. I think at the time, we were procuring this contract...
Hoping to get them on earlier.
We had had hopes of bringing the construction management firm on before we went out to bid. In the scheme of things, these were fairly small tasks.
Agreed. Agreed. They're a lot after one and two, so we'll let them do that. And then another thing I did want to talk about is, you know, there's an awful lot of steel in this project. And I looked at, you know, the bid pages towards the end, 274 and 275, and I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the inspections. If you think about what happened with the situation in San Francisco, can you just give us some assurances that the inspection of the steel will be appropriate?
We'll ask Mika Bonssal, the senior engineer who will be working on this project, to speak to that. She's done the most work in that area.
Great.
My name is Mika Bonssal. I'm the senior engineer with Public Works. So yeah, we will have to perform source inspection testing for every piece, every welded piece. And it is a requirement by Caltrans, so Caltrans has to approve, and it is part of the construction contract.
Great. Thank you so much. And then the remaining one questions I have are really just around the funding, just so everyone's super clear. The intended uses of the infrastructure reserve fund are, are all of these projects, right, from 2014? Yeah. So it's an appropriate, a bit of a leading question, but let's just be sure we all agree...
I missed the question.
No, no. The intended uses of the infrastructure reserve fund, which is what the budget amendment's for.
Yes, it's exactly for situations like this.
Okay. And how will this depletion affect future projects?
My understanding is the current reserve balance is quite a bit higher than the minimum essential $3 million reserve balance that we try to maintain.
Okay.
But that with the current plan that's in the five-year capital budget, we would potentially have an issue next fiscal year.
Yes.
So in talking with Kylie, the CFO, she's also informed us that there's a recommendation going to finance committee tomorrow evening to transfer $3.5 million of excess from the budget stabilization reserve to the infrastructure fund, along with the mid-year budget actions that would help to deal with most of this increase.
Okay. Well, we'll take that up tomorrow night then. Thanks for that. And then the final question is, are there any issues with cash flow or payment timing? I see that the county is reimbursing construction expenses, so any issues with that? Or we have plenty in the coffers to manage this from a liquidity standpoint?
I think we're okay there. We may still need to make some adjustments during the budget process each year as we've been tracking the timeline and making adjustments to anticipated expenses. We've done the same with reimbursements.
Okay. All right. So despite all of those super picky questions, this really is exciting. We can hardly wait. It's no longer mythical. It's not going to be next year, but it'll be the year after, and I can't wait to ride my bike over it. Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
So I'm also really pleased to see this finally come like close to happening. There's been times, actually, I was, I wanted to cross freeway and that underpass was closed for some, like on a bright sunny day, and no water in there. It's closed. So I understand the reasons why behind that, but yeah, I think a bridge would be nice that people get across easier. Do you guys know when the East Palo Alto Bridge was started? Just as comparison versus like our bridge?
Started construction?
No, started the process.
I do not know that.
Okay. I looked it up. It was actually 2012. When did we start our bridge process?
We started in early 2011 on the feasibility study.
So we'll finish this, what year do you think? What's most probable year?
Mid 2021.
2021. Okay. So it's about 10 years, right, roughly? And East Palo Alto started in 2011, and it started in 2011, they finished it last year, right? Yeah. Okay. It is what it is. So for a project like this, do we have like a performance bond for it?
A performance bond for the contractor?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Payment and performance bonds will be required for the project.
Okay. So if there are cost overruns, it's covered by these performance bonds?
Performance bonds provide that if the contractor fails to follow through with completing the project, the project surety would provide a replacement contractor. It doesn't guarantee that they'll finish within the price. The only way that the cost would go up would be if there were issues with the design or other unforeseen factors that led to very significant change orders that were in excess of the authorization we're asking from the council.
Okay. The one thing, I've taken the East Palo Alto Bridge many times when I go to Home Depot, and one thing I noticed is it doesn't have quite a swooping design. So I'm kind of curious on the balin side. I don't know if you can put this slide up? Oh, you actually have it up. Why doesn't it just go straight down along the freeway instead of going into the balins? Was there a reason why you jut out again? Was it for the scenery or what was the purpose behind that?
One reason is there's a high-pressure PG&E gas line that runs through that alignment, and we were trying to avoid placing piles near that.
Okay. And then one last comment, which is, or question, which is, in terms of trying to offset the much, much higher cost, I saw some cities actually put advertising or sell advertising on the bridge, right? And it's, I think, this area is one of the most congested freeways probably in California. Does staff look into that? Because it's, there's millions of cars passing by, and I'm sure, especially if Google was interested in selling advertising, it might be a good place to have it.
We did not. That would require separate council authorization.
Okay. Okay, well, I would be interested in knowing my colleagues' thoughts around this. I mean, it's cars passing by, it's a way to offset the cost. So yeah, that's all I have.
Councilmember Koo.
So I just want to reconfirm on slide number five, the outside funding, Santa Clara County $4 million, one Bay Area grant, 4.350, Google one, those are all confirmed, right? Secured?
We're asking the council this evening to approve the Santa Clara County grant agreement. And then the county board of supervisors also needs to approve that agreement. But essentially, they've allocated that funding, and now we just need to execute the actual funding agreement. There's not a formal agreement with Google. They've written letters to the city committing to that level of funding at the $1 million, and we've had discussions with them about setting milestones during construction where they would likely provide it in one-thirds along the way.
But you asked this evening for a minor change to that agreement, that the Santa Clara County one would be at least $4 million?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, would that at least $4 million include the potential of asking another 4.5? The one that Stanford has...
It would, yeah, yes. It would include as much funding as the county might agree to. And the way that would work is if they were amenable to that, then the agreement that they would take to their board of supervisors for approval would be for an amount greater than $4 million, and we would have authority to execute that agreement.
At the same time, I think for the sake of setting expectations, we do not have an expectation they would add that much additional funds to this project, since I know that they are interested in doing other recreational projects. And I think the attorney probably wanted to say "or more" rather than at least, for some reason.
The attorney wanted to say what? I'm sorry?
Or more.
Or more, okay. Okay. So if we don't get that amount, where is the remainder of the funds coming from? Like, for example, if we had the $9,350, there's a remaining of $12,700 or so. Where would that be coming from?
So the project currently has all the funding that's needed allocated into the capital project or appropriated into the project, with the exception of the $4.2 million budget amendment that we're asking, that we're recommending the council approve.
Thank you.
Seeing no further lights, council member Niss, did you say you wanted to make a motion?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Did you put the recommendation up on the screen? It's on a page, not, yes. So here's the recommendation, "To approve construction contract and contingency, approve the construction management contract, approve the grant agreement with the county of Santa Clara, which Brad just mentioned, and approve a budget amendment in the capital improvement That's a motion.
And are you going to add to your motion that the words "or more" ought to follow the $4 million in item four? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Cormack. Care to speak to your motion?
So, yes, I hope we'll all support this because this certainly ties right into our climate concerns, our climate crisis. If there's an easy way to get across 101, this is going to be it. And as I said earlier, especially if you happen to be working in that area. So that would be whether LinkedIn or Google or any of the other multitude of companies that are located on the other side of the Bay Shore. This is going to be a terrific addition. As Greg Tanaka just said, there are some times when you get to the bridge and it's closed without there being water or rain. So this is an assured way to get from our city across the Bay Shore and down to Mountain View and Sunnyvale. I wish it wasn't as expensive as it is. I wish we had moved more expediently. I'm sorry we ever got into our design contest, but that was yesterday, and this is today, and this is the time to move forward. So totally recommend this.
Councilmember Cormack, care to speak to your second?
No.
I will speak for a second and then go to council member Tanaka, because I didn't have comments earlier, which is, I'm going to support this. It seems to me that our space of choices here is fairly constrained. That is, if we don't do this now, then it makes no sense to try it again in six months, you know, if we go out for more bids, you know, or something like that, because construction costs will continue to escalate. So every day, every month that goes by, it's going to get harder to close this gap. So it seems to me the only other alternative we have is to put it on hold and wait for potential recession in the future, in which case construction costs come down and so forth. So it seems to me like that's our two choices here, and I think we should, I don't think we should make that kind of bet on future economies being more favorable to this. So I think we should do this now. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I mean, I bike a lot, so I'm a huge supporter of bike infrastructure, and I think this is actually really important. So definitely like the concept. The only thing I've been thinking about is, and this is more to the maker and second of the motion, is, you know, it's a lot of money. It's going to be money that we're taking from our BSR. You know, there's a lot of other infrastructure needs as well. I guess, and I'm kind of mixed on it, but I wanted to get my colleague's opinion on this, of actually allowing staff to explore the concept of advertising, because a lot of communities use this to offset some of their infrastructure costs. And this is a bridge that's in a perfect location for that. bridge that's in a perfect location for that. So I guess I just want to see if, take the temperature of the maker and second of the motion, whether staff can look at this as a way of offsetting the cost.
I think we need staff to talk about that for a minute. Your suggestion is to offset the cost and... Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to comment?
Is it helpful if, as a second of the motion, I share? Or would you like staff to go first?
Yeah, I mean, one comment we do have is that we're quite certain that Caltrans would not allow us to place advertising on a bridge across the right of way.
I think that answers it, right?
I do know that.
Yeah. It's always tempting, I know.
But it's okay to have it on the side of the freeway, but not on the bridge.
I think I'd like to keep it a little nice and clean, to be honest.
Well, I get that. I mean, I would like that, too. It's just, you know, we have to come up with an extra $4 million somehow. That's the problem.
But I know that VTA has done that and others, but I think I'd rather keep it as it is. Second there?
I'm not interested in having advertising on the bridge, so that's no.
Interesting idea.
Seeing no further lights. Are we ready to vote on a bike bridge? And that passes unanimously, 6-0, with Vice Mayor Fine absent. This has been quite a long time to get to this point, but looking forward to the groundbreaking.
I'm so delighted about it. I'll actually get on a bicycle and ride across. That will be interesting.
We now, oh, I'm going to, I mean, once, I mean, on the subject of selling advertising rights on the bridge, given what you said about Caltrain, you know, put a sign by the side of, put it by the side of the road seems to me no different than putting up a billboard just by the side of the road, and maybe that's something the city ought to consider someday in the future, is putting up billboards, selling, as a fundraising mechanism. We now move on to the final action item of the evening, which is a colleague's memo from councilmembers DuBois and Koo regarding potential urgency ordinance in front of AB 1482. And let's see. What's the proper way to do this? I understand there may be some recusals here. So should we have a discussion first, or should we ask for recusals now?
If a councilmember's going to recuse, they should do that right up front and leave the dais.
Are there any recusals?
Yes, there are.
Councilmember Niss.
So although the city attorney and I have discussed this, and I don't think this total, a total easy conclusion, because I have voted on a number of rental issues before, in fact, for the past six or seven years, and because we do own a small apartment complex in Palo Alto, and have owned that for quite some time, so for consistency, and as we say, an abundance of caution, I am going to recuse myself from this item.
Okay, so we have a delicate issue here, which is, as an urgency ordinance, my understanding is this takes six votes to pass. We have Vice Mayor Fine not with, not present, and councilmember Niss recused. That leaves five of us. And so, I'm not sure whether this takes a motion or not, but I think the proposal is that we continue this until a future date, probably next Monday.
We'd move to continue.
Councilmember DuBois, would you care to make a motion or not?
Move to continue to, I think our next meeting's December 3rd? December 2nd?
So, let's see. Do we have a second on that? Seconded by councilmember Koo. Care to speak for either your motion? No. Councilmember Koo, care to speak to your second?
I think I'll hold back.
Okay, I have a light from councilmember Tanaka.
It's okay.
Seeing no further lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously, 5-0, with councilmember Niss recused and Vice Mayor Fine absent. And so this item will be continued until December 2nd. Now, there are public speakers here for this item tonight, but I think that that should be next week, right?
It's at your discretion. If you'd like to allow the public comment for folks who've been here and waiting, you can, or you can encourage people to come back when you're going to be taking up the item.
You know, why don't we allow the public comment tonight? Okay, so first speaker, if you want, or you can come back in a week, or in two weeks, all right? Mr. Wood, are you here? Would you like to speak tonight, or would you like to speak when we take it up in two weeks?
I'd like to take advantage of the moment.
Okay, you have the floor. You have three minutes.
I don't think I want to come back a third time. Good evening. I am Marcus Wood. I live at 196 Colorado, and I'm here today as the face of Hobach Realty, who has been referenced in an anonymous letter to you. I understand partially based on that letter that you guys are in, looking at an ordinance related to residential rental property. I'm here to give you something from the landlord's perspective. Hobach Realty is one of the only private developers to build residential rental housing in Palo Alto over the last 20 years, and endured in this huge amount of the Palo Alto process. Excuse me. Over the last five years of his life, Harold Hobach was focused on the building of Park Plaza and the 82 residential units therein. And due to that, he, and his declining health, he never really raised the rents on these properties. So after his passing, over the last couple of years, we have invested a couple hundred thousand dollars in upgrading the property, and in August, sent out rent increases to recoup some of these costs. These rent increases, while substantial, still left the property at 10% to 15% below similar ones that had been rented at the property in the month of August. Unfortunately for us, the state in October passed a rent control initiative, and we found ourselves having to withdraw our rental increases. And we made rental increases commensurate with that which was allowed by the state. No tenants at our property who are current on their rent have ever been evicted or are under threat of eviction. The ordinance that you're considering will not change anything that we have done or will do. In other words, I would suggest that you'd better, your time might be better spent encouraging developers to build property, residential properties, instead of endeavoring to find ways to penalize or perhaps appear to penalize residential developers. Lastly, I'd like to encourage any one of you to come down and see what we have to offer and what we're doing, and I think you'll find that there's nothing that's bad there. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Philseth, and councilmembers. I wasn't going to comment on this because we don't have any personal issues with this. Only one of our daughters rents a house in Palo Alto, but she doesn't seem to be at risk of having a significant rent increase or anything like that. The rest of our family are homeowners, so it's not something that really impacts us as a family. But reading some of the letters in the packet, it occurred to me that it is possible that some tenants would be facing very significant rent increases, and Palo Alto has some of the highest rents in the entire country. Since AB 1482 has been passed, and it's going to take effect in about seven weeks, I didn't think it was an issue, but just to be on the safe side, it wouldn't hurt if we did restrict major rent increases between now and January 1st. Unfortunately, this is an ordinance that takes a supermajority, and you don't all longer have a supermajority sitting at the counter, so you can't do anything for a couple of weeks, and that makes it even a shorter increment of time before it would take effect. So I'm kind of ambiguous. Is it worth worrying about or not? Since high rents are an issue, and about 45% of the residents of Palo Alto are renters, that's over 30,000 people, it doesn't hurt to protect them from excessive rent increases. So when it comes back, when you do have a supermajority, they can vote, you may as well pass it and eliminate the threat to our tenants. It's a shame that we have this financial issue, and that the rents in Palo Alto, and in fact, nationwide are so high, but that's the environment we have, and we have to recognize it. So I appreciate the councilmembers bringing this forward, and I hope you'll have enough people attending the next meeting so you actually can vote on it.
Thank you. And finally, Kelsey Baines.
Good evening. I will come back in December and talk about more of the details in terms of the merits of this urgency ordinance, but in the meantime, I'm just going to share my personal story, because this will be my final council meeting that I will be able to walk to, because in October, I received a rent increase of 18%. So I am moving. I'm officially priced out of downtown after having moved, I will have moved twice since I moved here in 2017. The first being after my house was sold, and then the plan for its redevelopment was to tear it down and build one single-family home, which was the zoning for that parcel. And now I have since moved again. Been at my apartment for a year. My roommate, who I live with, has been there for many years, and then we received, after my year of being there, we received about 17.5% rent increase. And I don't know about most of the councilmembers here, but I would guess most of you don't get a 17% raise every year, so that's not something, that's not a price increase that I could deal with at my salary and with my savings. So I will be moving to South Palo Alto, to your neighborhood, Allison. So I will talk some more in terms of the policy specifics and how I would encourage you to think about this, and just as a preview, I will encourage you to think about it as a public health measure, to try to keep people in their homes. We don't have any other renters here speaking tonight, which is strange to me, so I would encourage you to put this item earlier on the agenda next time. It's hard for working people to get to late-night meetings, and especially people with kids have a hard time coming to late-night meetings. But yeah, so I would encourage you to think about this as a public health measure, a way to keep people in their homes. And the other thing is, I've had some back and forth with people who are paying attention to this issue, and it's unclear to me if we need the rent cap as part of this, but other cities that have done this urgency ordinance have had both the rent cap and the just cause, so basically starting 1482 early to make sure people are able to remain in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. I have lights from councilmembers DuBois, Koo, and Cormac. And do you folks want to talk tonight, or do you want to wait until we have the Vice Mayor here?
I have a feeling we probably all want to say the same thing to the public speaker, and that...
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, just real quick, 1482, you know, if you did receive a rent increase recently, it rolls back the rent to March 15th, to 5%. That's already the state law. It takes effect in January. And really, the intent of the memo, for those who read it, was really to focus on evictions, so anybody who's in the process of an eviction, we would put a moratorium on that until January. But it sounds like it may be too late for Ms. Baines, but you know, if you had a rent increase after March, your rent would actually roll back to that previous rate, plus 5%, plus inflation.
Councilmember Koo.
So thank you, Tom, for saying that, because that's exactly what I was going to say. But also, the reason there isn't so many renters here to speak tonight is because there's also fear of retaliation from their landlords. So they've written letters. I've seen them. I've had phone calls, and you know, the purpose is to ensure that we provide some stability to the tenants who are in, who live here, and also to ensure that their kids are still in school, and they don't have to suddenly move, especially now during the holiday season. It's just completely unfair, and to receive these kind of news. I've asked the city manager in order to put out some information to, for tenants, informational about this AB 1482, and even though I think that when the notice of eviction comes in, before, you should take that to Attorney or to Project Sentinel in order to find out what your rights are. So don't move too fast, but find out more information. Thank you.
Councilmember Cormac.
I just wanted to offer Ms. Baines a ride downtown, downtown, any Monday night. I come and go, so you're welcome to carpool with me. And then you can ride your bike over the bridge.
Okay, thank you. So with that, that ends the action calendar. We have time for councilmember questions, comments, and announcements. Councilmember Cormac.
Yes, first, I'd like to say I had the opportunity to attend the monthly homeless services committee meeting, and I want to thank Minka Van Der Swaag for hosting that and for all of the providers who attended. I thought my colleagues might be interested to know that we have about 30 homeless seniors in Palo Alto. That's the count that they have. So I was interested, sad, but interested to learn that we actually have a good sense of that. The other thing is, I'd be, I'd like the council-appointed officers committee to give us an update about the city auditor. Understand from communication received that Mr. Rhodes is leaving, and I'd just like to understand where we are in that process.
Councilmember Koo.
I'd like to find out, what is the process for when councilmembers go out of town? What is the procedure to inform the clerk that they won't be here?
Normally, they just send us an email letting us know that when they're going to be out of town. It is not always followed, and in this case with Vice Mayor Philseth, he sent it to the wrong Beth, so I wasn't aware of his absence on this one.
Vice Mayor Fine, send it to the wrong Beth. Right, okay. And so we found out today, staff found out today about this? So Attorney found out this morning? Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other lights, we're going to adjourn. Again, we discussed earlier. You know, we mourn the loss of Donatus Ohamana, a member of the city team who lost his life in a work-related accident this weekend. And so our thoughts and prayers and best wishes are with his family and friends during this difficult time. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.